Good evening. The Northampton School Committee is now reconvening an open session after having been in an executive session. And we will now move into our regular agenda, which is the begins with the public comment period. I would ask of those who wish to speak in public comment if you could just state your name and address for the record. And I will keep the time at three minutes. I'm just grabbing the list. So the first person who is signed up to speak is Dr. Kay Sokvitney.
Hello. I'm Dr. Kay Sokvitney, 9 Mayberry Lane in Florence. I'm a clinical psychologist and a parent of two high school students. And many of you have heard me before, so I could just stand here for three minutes and you'd know a lot of what I'm going to say. But instead, I'll try to make it brief. I have, in the past, when I've talked about the issue of school start time, I have presented and given information about the research findings. What I really want to say, I can summarize that in a sentence. The research findings are compelling. As a psychologist, I am persuaded that the findings are so strong that they should guide our decision. Sleep plays a key role in learning, achievement, health, mood, and safety. The major thing that has held us back, I understand there isn't disagreement about that. When these discussions have happened, there is not disagreement about the fact that it is better for high school students to have a later start time in Northampton. The dilemmas have come up around the logistics. Twenty-five to thirty years ago, the town made a decision to go with a three-tiered bus schedule for budgetary, not educational reasons. But we're now in a position to know about the negative costs of that decision and to correct the inadvertent harm to adolescent brains, bodies, mood, and learning that result from that schedule. I believe it's the job of the superintendent of the school committee to lead educational decisions based on current knowledge about children's physiology and learning process. I'm also a member of the SPED PAC, the Special Education Parents Advisory Committee. I attended Lori Farkas's summary of the SPED budget for next year. She did a wonderful job going over it in great detail. And while you all know, I completely support the override. I will be voting for the override. But I want to point out that even with, even were the override not to pass, we still are in a position to do something to improve the circumstances of all students by moving decisively and swiftly on the proposal that's going to be presented later this evening. And I want to urge that that's what happens. The very last point I want to make is also one I've made before, but is that less sleep handicaps all students, but it disproportionately burdens students with learning differences. And I want that to be taken seriously and considered, that those students need the sleep and the help to education that sleep gives as much or more as all students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker who signed up is Gina Whalen.
Hi. My name is Gina Whalen. I live at 35 Norfolk Avenue. I am a sophomore at Northampton High School. My first period class, half the students struggled to stay awake. On occasion, our first period class meets later in the day. And on those days, the teacher has remarked a significant increase in attention and participation of the students. I think starting later would be very beneficial. It would just take the edge off the exhaustion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Deb Kuhn.
Hello. My name is Deb Kuhn. I live at 19 Drewson Drive in Florence. I'm here this evening to speak a bit about the future of arts, specifically music, at Northampton High School if the current cuts come to fruition. This is the third time in my history with the Northampton Public Schools that I have stood here in support of music. I would also like to add that I've been teaching at the high school since 2002. Prior to my arrival, I do not believe that any band director had lasted more than four to five years since the days of Noreen Tiley. I have given each of you a packet of materials that I hope you will find the time to read. It begins with a letter I wrote to the editor in 2006 when we made the decision to cut instrumental music from the curriculum for fourth and fifth graders. I consider this to be very important because it illustrates so clearly that cuts in the arts program seldom heal. With each loss or change of personnel, the program needs to begin anew. And if the program is gone, it is especially hard to rekindle. As it stands now, the instrumental music position for the next year allows for a teacher at 34 percent. This will cover the cost of a band director and nothing more. There will be no music theory, no jazz program, no history of popular music, and very likely no student orchestra for the musical. There certainly will be no chamber music class, a class that was lost when my job was cut to 83 percent. Students will not have regular access to a music teacher after school or at other times during the school day. Students who desire a career in music will find it difficult to get the direction and encouragement that they need. Just as troubling is the loss of a class for musicians that don't fit into a band setting, what will become of our guitar players, bass players, and our pianists, and those who play drum kit? For these kids, there are no strong advocates.
Bill, the custodian, please call the pool office. Bill, the custodian, please call the pool office. Thank you.
There are few adults who will stand up and fight to maintain these classes. Many, although not all of these students are at risk. A music program is just that, is a program. It is more than a class. It is a culture. It is a place of connection, a place to connect with your peers, your teacher, the music, and a tradition. When done well, students experience high-quality music and play at a high level, and I believe we have achieved this at Northampton High School. With a band director at 34, or 50, or perhaps even 67 percent, the sense of program likely not exists. Certainly, at 34 percent, you're inviting a revolving door of teachers. There will be no consistency and no continuity. The research is overwhelming about the positive impact of music and the other arts on student learning. I believe it is time to stand up and find some creative solutions. You must understand that these cuts will gut the program and rob our children of the kind of education that they deserve. Please go back to the drawing board and try again. It is impossible to convey in this short time the impact that the current plan will have on our students and the culture at the high school. What I do know for sure is that it will take years to build the program back up to its current quality. Again, I hope you can find a moment to read the materials I have given you. They are just a drop in the ocean of research that is out there. And I would also like to invite you to our spring concert on May 16th at 7:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next speaker is Danielle Deetz.
Hello. My name is Danielle Deetz. I live on 222 Elm Street. I graduated from Northampton High School last year, and I just finished up my freshman year at the University of Massachusetts studying at the Eisenberg School of Management and being a part of the Commonwealth Honors College. I'm here tonight to urge the school committee to move to address the issue of the school start time. I was a part of the committee last year as the student representative. And over and over again, I heard about the issues about changes of school start time and the stats how it was better for the students' mind and for their learning. But I'm not here to talk about the statistics tonight. I'm here to talk about my own experience with my younger brother. My younger brother Zachary just started this year at the high school. And I am proud to say he's absolutely doing amazing job with a 4.0 GPA and honors classes that are a year older than him. But the one problem is Zach's having a hard time waking up at 8:00 morning. And because of that, I found it's, he's really depressed and he seems to be moody, a lot more than usual. So I feel that it's because of the school start time and it's just taking a big drain on his body. And it saddens me to know that he's not having the same type of experience that I had. But looking back, I too struggled with the school start time and feel that other students did too. We're just a sweep for half of it, so we don't really remember. So in college, I enjoyed it so much more, being able to sweep in, being able to enjoy my classes because I was asleep, I mean awake for most of them and not asleep. And I feel like I just was more involved in my education. And I think that it's a really, it's a good thing to try to look at changing. And I urge you guys to look at it and to try to make a decision that's best for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Renee Wetstein.
Hello. Renee Wetstein, 222 Elm Street. I live with the Deetz boys. And it seems to me that the school start time has really polarized this community. And, you know, issues like this, it's kind of strange why it's so polarizing. It just reminds me of the assault, you know, the ban on assault weapons. You know, it seems if you believe in the assault, you know, the ban on assault weapons, it's a no-brainer to you. You're thinking like, how many more kids need to die? You know, even Representative, you know, Gabby keeps on, you know, coming back and it seems like they can't get a ban. And it seems like the same thing with the school start time. There are people that are so convinced that it's the right thing to do, the statistics, I think, most of the committee, but I don't think all of the committee really, really, truly in their gut wants to change it because I think it would have happened. So why, why is this so polarizing? I think it has to do with, it's not as simple as if a kid was allergic to peanut butter. If a kid was truly allergic to peanut butter and they were, you know, gagging, sick, had to be hospitalized, you would say, you know, don't give the kid peanut butter. And you wouldn't have your child be eating peanut butter sandwich next to that child. I think the school start time, it's something that's not credible. You know, you think like the kids need, should go to bed earlier. I've heard that, you know, different speeches that the kids are up late doing, you know, Facebook or texting. Well, I could tell you the experience of the kids that I know from raising kids, being involved with other kids, being involved with the key club. I mean, the, most students have to get up between 6:00 and 6:30. They go to school, they end at 1:59. All of them go to after-school help. And you know why they need after-school help? Because they're asleep during a lot of their lessons. It's so much information that they have to access, and they're not fully engaged because they're exhausted. One of my kids has a newspaper rolled up by his teacher and hits him in the head during his, because he falls asleep. So, you know, you hear stories of this over and over again. There are students that are falling asleep in class. And so, of course, they need extra help because they're not accessing it. And then they have sports typically at 3:00. The practices are two hours, and a lot of them are not at the high school. It's at JFK or Ryan Road. The time they get back home is close to 5:30. And then a lot of them have after-school, whether it's key club at Mondays at 7:00, whether it's the play, whether it's musicals. It's a very long day for these kids, and they are going to bed at some point. But it's a very long day. And so I ask that you look at this as compassion, that, you know, whether it's, whether it's your kid didn't get affected by it, whether, you know, we've had people come up and say, well, my kid is on such-and-such team and it's working for my child. But what about so many kids that it's not working for? And so that's what I'm asking for, compassion, to really think about so many students it's really not working for. And it's not working for two of my three kids, and it isn't working for a lot of their friends. So, you know, if they're depressed, if they're sad, if they're not engaged, it doesn't have to be this experience. My understanding is that the committee is going to come tonight with a proposal. They looked at all the logistics. So I hope tonight you vote on it because it's May, and we need to know in September that this change is being made. Thank you.
The next speaker is Zachary Deetz.
This is the 222 Elm Street portion of the agenda.
Zachary Deetz, 222 Elm Street. I'm the talked-about Zachary. I didn't know that was going to happen, but I guess it did. So recently, in my, in my writing class, I wrote a report on school start time because we, we were asked to write a paper on a problem in our community and write a solution to the problem and like lay out what the problem is and what you think the solution should be. So I chose school start time. And I sent that paper actually to all of you. I'm not sure if you, any of you got the chance to look at it yet. So basically, what, I did a lot of research in writing this paper, and I found out a lot of things I didn't know before. But the key thing that really stood out was that every kid is different. And so all, there's a lot of studies that just say blanket facts, but that's not going to be true for every kid. But what I did realize is that in general, for, for a school system, you need to, you need to target, you need to have the school set up so that you're targeting the average kid because not every kid is going to be the same. So like, I have, I know, I think one kid who thinks the school start time is great and should actually be earlier. That's one kid I know. And then I know a lot, a lot of kids who think it should be later. I've not had a class this year where I've not seen kids fall asleep. Today, I saw a kid fall out of his chair because he was so deep in asleep, he like slid and, and fell. And yeah, it's just really, it's really frustrating trying to learn. And it's also really, really hard to learn honors algebra two at 7:30 in the morning. I almost fell asleep during a test yesterday that I had, which wasn't a good sign, I don't think. Yeah. Looks like I have enough time. I'm going to read one, one thing that I think's important that has never really been discussed in the, to the committee. So REM sleep is rapid eye movement sleep, and it predominates throughout the final two to three hours of the night. So this type of sleep is essential for learning, and it's towards the end of your sleep. And since high school, students are being woken up before their natural like rise time, they're missing out on this sleep. And that makes it really hard for us to remember stuff throughout the day. And that was just a cool fact I hadn't heard stated before. And there's some really cool stuff about ADHD being talked about, it being misdiagnosed as a, it's actually a sleep disorder, you, most of the time. So, yeah.
Thank you, Zachary. The next speaker is Stephen Eldridge.
Hello. I'm Stephen Eldridge. I live at 29 O'Tech Street in Florence. I'm the theater teacher at Northampton High School. I, first of all, just want to thank Deb Kuhn. I think she has articulated extremely well and briefly and cogently the issues that are facing music. And I would say, and I would agree with Deb, that we, each of the, I'm the, did I mention I'm the theater teacher? Yeah. That each of the arts teachers at the high school are, are facing an array of such issues, each in our own way. I'm also very pleased that Deb spoke about culture, saving me having to establish that as an issue. One of the interesting things that affects us as art teachers is that the work begins in the classroom. It begins completely curricular. But where the work goes, when it goes into art, and this I think is true of every single one of us, is it then has to go, it grows outside of the classroom. It goes into performances and art exhibits. It goes out into the community. And so that sort of extends the arc of what we do with the students. So when we talk about establishing a culture and, and building a culture that can support that kind of work, it's a very concrete issue. For example, one of the reasons that Bo Flahy can't be here tonight is that she's got a concert. So her students from the classroom are with her performing. In my case, where the issue is going to affect me the most clearly is with the student production program. We do full-length productions that are entirely produced, directed, choreographed, composed, painted, designed, acted, you name it, by students. And this wasn't my original intention as a teacher. This is my eighth year in the, in the program, in the high school. I started a one-act festival. And I felt that was important because I wanted every kid in the school to be able to act each year. And I wanted there to be a concrete final at the end of the fall semester for all of the acting students. In the mode of the winter and spring concerts, I actually borrowed that idea from the music department. And the students picked up on that idea, and I have been watching the culture of theater production, of students forming teams to collaborate using higher orders of thinking, to interpret literature. Very often, the latest production we did was, of course, Alice in Wonderland. So they're very often adapting works of literature. I probably shouldn't even mention Clockwork Orange, which was a production that featured original music, choreography, video, fine art by the students. Now, the problem is, is that this, I, as an educator and an artist, I'm extremely excited by the students developing this. And I am, as my curriculum goes, I'm trying to incorporate them into curriculum. I hear my time is ending. So all I can say is, there's no way to discuss this in the three-minute format. Those of you who would like to talk to some of us, tomorrow from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., there will be an art and, and technology education exhibit at Forbes Library, and there will be a reception from 4:00 to 7:00. And good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Eldridge. That completes the list of folks who signed up. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in public comment? Okay. If you could just state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer McKenna. I live at 89 Florence Street in Leeds. I actually want to just speak briefly to both issues that have been addressed tonight and echo what's been said about the theater department and the music department at Northampton High School, which are extraordinary. Personally, my son has found himself in those two places. I learned today that the NHS administration has taken all the kids who signed up for music theory, jazz workshop, the history of popular music next year, and put them into other electives. This does not telegraph or reflect the spirit of the override. We're very concerned about it. This department, this school, this school district has an extraordinary arts program, an extraordinary theater program, an extraordinary music program led by Deb Kuhn. I cannot speak highly enough of what I've witnessed of her work. Just last week, the high school band won a gold at the competition in Washington, D.C., the most recent of a long line of accolades and awards won by that band under her leadership. We need to support, cultivate, protect our community resources, our school resources, our extraordinary teachers, mentors, and educators, particularly at moments like this. The rest of the community, most of us, are coming together to support the override. I urge the school committee, the school district, the high school administration to support these extraordinary leaders. In terms of the school start time, I want to thank all of you for setting up and empowering the committee that's going to report tonight, and for the committee members who, who served on that, you know, school start committee. All of, all of the community members, the teachers, the students, and you folks who served on that committee, volunteering on top of all that you're already doing. So many of us so appreciate that work. The committee has long been considering the later high school start time because there's extensive and persuasive evidence that a later start time has academic, health, and safety benefits for all students, even high-performing students. And there's evidence that the 7:30 start time hinders the educational experience and performance of significant number of our high school students. As Zach referenced, the front page of the New York Times Sunday Review recently, written by a psychiatrist and professor of psychiatry at New York University Medical School, prevented more and new evidence that ADHD, which has dramatically risen in recent years, is related to sleep deprivation. That's one more, more new piece of evidence on top of the mounting evidence that supports your decision, I hope, to change the start time beginning September 2013. I want to implore you, urge you to act tonight to make that decision. I'm hopeful that the committee will provide very concrete strategies to make that happen. And a lot of us are waiting for your action on this for the coming school year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. I think that completes everyone who wished to speak. So we will now close the public comment period, and we'll see if there are any announcements from members of the school committee. Mr. Bourne.
All right, two. One is the Mass Association of School Committees will be holding their Legislative Advocacy Day on Tuesday, May 21st. It's an opportunity for school committee members to go to Beacon Hill and kind of make our case for what needs to happen at the state level. Couple of legislative priorities this year are adequate and equitable distribution of Chapter 70 school aid and charter school finance reform. I'll be going there that day. We have meetings scheduled. I have meetings scheduled right now for 10:00 with Senator Rosenberg and 11:00 with Peter Coott's office. If there's anybody else from the school committee who wants to join me, they could let me know. I need to get the names of who's going by tomorrow. So I want to announce that. The other thing I want to announce is that I'm not going to be running for reelection to the school committee this fall. And it's been a great experience. If there's anybody out there in Ward One who's interested in running, I'd be happy to speak with them about what it's like to be on the school committee.
Thank you, Mr. Bourne.
I have an announcement. I am the liaison to the Northampton Prevention Coalition. And on Wednesday, May 15th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the JFK Middle School Cafeteria right here, there will be a workshop with everybody, school connectedness and teen wellness, parents, youth, and schools working together. We will have a keynote speaker, Dr. Chris Overt, a clinical psychologist. The mayor should be there talking. And everyone's invited to come for dinner, to socialize, and to break off into forums. So that's Wednesday, May 15th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the middle school cafeteria right here, and hope to see people there. Thank you.
Okay. Any other announcements about my schedule or?
Well, you're listed on it.
Just found out. Thank you.
You just found out?
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Under recommended actions tonight, we have a consent agenda that includes the approval of minutes of school committee meeting for March 14th and March 28th. We have two contracts. One is for Renee Cote, and that's for $8,115.37. And this is for mechanical repairs and maintenance to the Dektron humidification unit at the JFK Pool. And then the Hitchcock Center for $10,600, which is a hands-on science program for Leeds and Ryan Road. And that's to be paid with grant funds. There's also field trip requests. NHS baseball going to Cooperstown, New York on May 15th, and the JFK sixth graders traveling to the Bronx Zoo on May 22nd, 2013. Is there a motion to accept?
To approve and accept.
Prove the consent agenda. Excellent. Second, okay. Mr. Moore.
I'd like to, actually, can I, there's a one inaccurate thing in the minutes of 3:14:13.
Okay. So why don't we?
Small inaccuracies.
So why don't we move that off the consent agenda, and we'll take that up as a separate item once we get beyond the consent agenda? So then minus the March 14th minutes, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So the consent agenda is approved. And now, why don't we take up the minutes of March 14th, 2013 as a separate item?
Second.
Second. And then you have an amendment.
I'd like to offer an amendment to, it's Part B, the NHS Student Representatives Report. It states that the girls' basketball team was second in the state. They were second in Western Mass.
Okay. So there's been a motion to amend to reflect that. Is there a second?
Second, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then on the, on the acceptance of those March 14th minutes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So the March 14th minutes are approved as amended. Now we'll move to reports and recommendations. This would be the time, we normally have a report from our student representative, but I believe Alex could not be with us tonight. So we'll move on to a presentation of the NHS Robotics Club. And I would turn that over to Mr. Newman.
All right. So I'm Eric Newman. I'm filling a one-year position as a high school science teacher. And I reflect back to last April when I was in an interview, and it was mentioned, oh, and how about, you know, being the faculty advisor for the robotics team? I said, okay, sure. I had no idea the magnitude of the journey that we were about to embark on. So we'll have introductions here in a minute, but I just want to speak briefly to the group about FIRST. It's this program called U.S. FIRST, founded by Dean Kamen, who was an inventor, you know, scientist, et cetera. And this program brings in people from, you know, vertically integrated. We had some of our students coming down to the middle school and working with the LEGO Robotics League. We have scientists and engineers working with us. We have, the program kind of draws in people that have been involved with the program in years past. So we actually, as the, the program got going, some students from Hampshire, some students from around who had been involved in high school came to us to want to be involved with it. So this program, once it happens, it, it just brings in so many people and brings them together. The communication, the working together is just amazing. So, and then there's this horizontal level where we have Robotics League. We have scientists and engineers working with us. We have, the program kind of draws in people that have been involved with the program in years past. So we actually, as the program got going, some students from Hampshire, some students from around who had been involved in high school came to us to want to be involved with it. So this program, once it happens, it just brings in so many people and brings them together. The communication, the working together is just amazing. So, and then there's this horizontal level where we have people that are actually building the robot. And we went to a competition where we saw people that had nothing to do with the technical aspect but were working on the fundraising and the business aspect. There were people that dressed up as mascots and made, you know, costumes and designed these elaborate set decorations that, you know, never touched a wire but were as much a part of their team's robotic program as anyone else. And it's just truly, it was humbling, and it was amazing to see just how many different kinds of people, and like I say, vertical and horizontal, that came together to make these programs happen. So it's been wonderful. So let's just do a quick round of introductions here for the folks that are here. So go ahead.
My name is Mattin. I'm one of the mentors of the team. I work at UTC Aerospace Systems in Connecticut, which is one of the sponsors of the team.
I'm Johanna Rosenbaum. I am a student at Northampton High School. I am on the programming team of the [inaudible].
I'm Ben Tzoual. I'm a junior at Northampton High School, and I've been working around those two [inaudible].
I'm Sarah [inaudible].
And it's a robot.
Now, the full functionality of the robot includes a shooter that fires frisbees. We are not activating that here for some obvious reasons. Every year, there's a different challenge. Last year, it was rebound rumble, where it shot basketballs. This year, it was called ultimate ascent, where it fired frisbees at targets and then also had a climbing part. And they'll explain some of the functionality of the robot. And also, you know, the wood, it's been, we've, after the one competition, the students got, you know, along with the mentors, said, oh, here's something else we can do. So we'll go ahead and pass it over.
All right. So this year, as [inaudible] pointed out, the challenge was to be shooting these frisbees into goals, I don't know, about thirty feet away, and feet up. So we designed a shooter system. It loads in through, the frisbees load in through here to shoot, and then land down here, and are shot by these wheels. Most recently, we've added these wooden sideboards, so we're able to climb, oh, no, we're able to climb up onto the pyramid by hooking on the bars with these poles right there.
It's a two-wheeled pyramid. It might be [inaudible]. It's a two-wheeled pyramid, and the robot drives right into the pyramid, and then hangs [inaudible]. It gives an extra ten points if they make a break.
So this year, we had, we had some trouble starting up. We were trying to do more teaching with the new members, but it wasn't really coordinated, and it was love students teaching students, and maybe the students weren't a hundred percent sure of stuff that they were teaching in the first place. I know I would run into Mr. Newman's room right before the end of school and teach myself a lesson, and I was going to teach like twenty kids. It's solid work. But we got together, and in January, we found the challenge and started brainstorming, designing, and coming up with everything. There's a lot of work and rework of the robot as we went from prototypes to the final design of the shooter and the loader. And much of it came together in the last week or two, right before the competition.
Yeah. We also did all the programming for the robot. We have a really knowledgeable programmer, Simon Everheld. He knows a lot of what he's doing. He taught a lot of programmers stuff through after-school lessons and was hand-going. It was very fun.
We had a lot of complimentary, like Whitney, some of the people who can't be here, like Keith Davis, Scott Barton. All right. And Dan Costello, who all really helped bring this robot together. And we went to the competition back in March. I don't know, I don't remember the exact date.
It was last weekend.
Last weekend in March. So that was a really great competition. It was about fifty teams here, all about like twenty to thirty people, all competing in this great big convention center in Hartford. Everyone had their robots, everyone had their schedule and their matches. There was just so much energy and excitement bringing it all together. There was a lot of skill we had to learn. I was on the driving team, and so we had a lot of trouble because we had matches like very close together, and after one match, we'd have to go back and fix something that broke or change something that wasn't really working. And so a lot of it was like learning to use our time well and learning to try and get on the practice field so we could test it out before we had to go back on like ten five minutes.
There was a lot of running back and forth to the pit, to the competition area. And I was on the sand watching from a lot of it while he was in the field driving the robot. And it was really exciting seeing, so basically, it's three robots and three robots. They were shooting frisbees into goals and climbing the pyramid. Some even climbed the pyramid and put frisbees up at the top of the pyramid, which got, was it fifty points?
Twenty.
Twenty points? A lot of points.
So this year, the postseason, we've been putting stuff together, like we add the new wood sideboards because there's some postseason competition we're going to in one week from now. So we're going to that. We're planning a lot better now. We improved the robot, made it work a lot better. Got some testing done, so we can shoot better than before, even though some of our [inaudible] is scoring us a ton of points. So we're doing, we're doing that. We're trying to do more teaching to people, we're on such a tight schedule for building our robot.
Yeah. We're also trying to get more artists on our team to help with the design part. We're going to paint this climber board right here.
We most recent, we most recently had a logo contest that's finishing up this Friday. So we're trying to make a new logo for our team, although we had, we had one this year that was designed by Johanna Sister. We're trying to, you know, get some more input from more people and more artists in the community, and get some people, especially to design some of the like mascots and the booths that had robotics, which are just beautiful and elegant because of.
What's important, that you include, because this program really opens to everybody, no matter what you want to do, there's people who are really into science and engineering and technology that are actually working on the robot, and then there's also people who do the art in the business and like the organization of the program. And it's like for high school students, but it's open to alums, like needing a bit of help, and anybody really in the community. And we also network with younger students to try to get them involved to learn their end in department.
We're starting to, trying to start LEGO Leeds for some of the elementary schools to get them into robotics, because this is all one league. It goes from elementary school all the way up to high school. And we really want to get that a part of the community, because we can see, you know, some of the kids in our team, their little brothers and sisters come, and they just want to look at the robot, and they want to know how it works. And getting them involved in anything, I think that's how you get them in high school. There's a lot of research that shows that once they get to high school, you know, a lot of the times, you know, they try to get them to college, but college is too late. So they try at high school. And high school, a lot of research shows that it's still too late to get kids interested in science. You really want to start when they're young. So I think the more we expand this program in the community, I think it'll be really good for all of the students. And like they said, part of FIRST is it incorporates every kind of student, from designing, you know, a set for your pit at competition, for having it to your team. There is a competition every year to write a business plan and say, what are the goals of your team? What do you want to do? A lot of that is also community outreach. A lot of the first teams that have been around for a really long time have traditions in their community where they fundraise for various parts of their community and fundraise for their robot. It's not just about building a robot. That's about six to eight weeks out of the year. The rest of the year, it's all about being a team and letting things together and being a community.
Excellent. Yes, that's it. So any, yeah, thoughts? Yes, please.
I remember, I thought the basketball one was named Paul or something. Does this one have a name?
Allegedly, it's Hal.
Hal.
Okay. So there you go.
There was some real consensus.
All right. So maybe that'll be an objective for us coming into Battle Cry. So we'll plug Battle Cry. That's coming up next weekend, Friday night, the seventeenth, into Saturday, all day the eighteenth, down at WPI. And we'll have, we'll publish some details about that, et cetera. We also have some videos and a presentation that we'll get together and put up on our Facebook page and/or on YouTube so that you can, you know, get a little more of a look. Like just seeing Hal here and not really seeing like the whole scene, the arena with fifty teams and the, you know, the pits and noise and six robots at a time moving around. And, you know, you saw him drive a little bit. There are three robots on each team driving, maneuvering, like positioning each other. There were some robots that were really good at shooting, so then other robots that would come up and block the firing or try and push them out of the way or get into more. So there were so many aspects to it. And like we said, just, it was amazing, the vertical and the horizontal, how many different kinds of people that are just drawn to this program once they're involved. It was, it was just, I guess, humbling and just awesome. So, yeah. Please.
I want to thank you for the presentation. And I may have this wrong, but I believe that this presentation part is part of the competition. In other words, when you're at the competition and people are talking to you in the stands, they have, maybe it's a different competition, but do they have like the kind of this?
There's judges who go around, they talk to you about your robot, talk to you about your program, talk to you about what you're doing for robotics.
Right, right. Good.
And actually, really, really good point, because these folks were there with other teams from across the state, across the region, and at some of the bigger competitions across the nation. And so that was one of, you know, all of these, all of us, you know, talked to people from other teams, problem solved with them. Oh, what did you do for this, you know? And, right, discussing the different aspects of the different systems, how it worked, how the whole thing came together. So the.
It's different, all of the robots are a competition. So just walking around and seeing the sixty robots and how everybody addressed a problem is a great learning tool in itself.
Right, right. Yeah, it's amazing. So and then a final note then on the community support. One of the big things that the team had to do was fundraise. This was a program that entirely was, you know, self-funded. So UTC, who Whitney works for, you know, GE Healthcare, JCPenney, some of the organizations, the Northampton Education Foundation, and then door-to-door sales of our light bulbs and other community stuff. So this is something that, you know, the team wants to get more people in the community knowing about, seeing how exciting and awesome it was, and just get everybody kind of, you know, coming together, because it's been a great experience. So.
Any other thoughts or questions? Thank you, folks. Come on out to Battle Cry. We'll let you know when it is. Yeah. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Newman.
Thank you, Hal.
[laughing].
[inaudible].
Ben's not using a rubber.
She still trusted it. Well done.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is, do we want to move right on to the next agenda?
Yeah.
We have a, we have a gift this evening that's being presented from People's Bank, and there are three people listed, Janice Mazzalo, Jessica Wales, and Sue Wilson here to make a presentation.
And for introduction, our Director of Innovative Instruction and Technology, Angelo Rota, would like to introduce the group from People's Bank.
Good evening to everyone. Thank you. And I have great pleasure this evening in introducing representatives from People's Bank. People's Bank will be opening a new branch in Northampton on King Street very soon. The three folks with us tonight are Jessica Wales. She is the Northampton Consumer and Business Banking Center Branch Manager. She's also a former student at Ryan Road School, JFK Middle School, and graduated from Northampton High School. Janice Mazzalo is the Senior Vice President, Human Resources for People's Bank, and she lives in Florence. And the Vice President for Corporate Responsibility, Susan Wilson, is also here, and please welcome them. Thank you very much.
Well, good evening, and thank you so much for this opportunity to say a few words about People's Bank and about our donation to the Northampton Public Schools. Academic excellence is a priority for us and something that we have been involved with in the communities that we serve. We are also very passionate about innovation and technology, and I just love what the robotics team is doing. With this donation of five projector and document camera sets, we are excited about bringing additional innovation and technology into your classrooms. In the very near future, as Angelo said, we will be opening our Green Office here in Northampton, and we will be coming a part of the larger Northampton community. And in addition, because our office is LEED-registered, we'll be bringing additional innovation and technology to the community, which will also mean that People's Bank will continue to support this community in a variety of ways, including academic excellence. So thank you so much again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to move to accept the gift.
Okay. So there's been a motion made to accept and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? And the community thanks you very much for the gift. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a presentation by the Late Start Ad Hoc Committee, as represented by one of our former colleagues, Lucy Hartree. Miss Chair.
Good evening. My name is Lucy Hartree, and I served as the Chair of the Ad Hoc Start Time Subcommittee. It's good to be back at a school committee meeting, although I must say, it's way better, more relaxing to be on this side of the podium rather than that. First, I would like to thank the members of the Ad Hoc. Worked so hard. We met for a couple of hours every Tuesday afternoon for three months, and many did hours and hours of homework as well. The members, some of them are here, and so I would ask them to stand up or wave or whatever when I say their names. Ezekiel Baskin from, he was a new, he's a student at NHS. Beth Deppmold, community member. Blue Duval, school committee. Randy Gordon, I don't believe is here. He's a teacher at NHS. Steve Harrell, a community member. Janet Hicks is also a faculty member at the high school. Harvey Hill, community member. Howard Moore, school committee. Johanna Renaud, a school NHS student. And myself am a community member. I'd also like to thank the school personnel and community members who took the time to help us with our research. For those in the audience and those at home watching who have not actually read the report, and actually, Steve has several copies he can circulate if you're interested. I believe you all have them, correct? Let me tell you a little bit about our process and summarize the results of our work. Then I'll open it up to questions and ask the rest of the subcommittee members be recognized because their expertise will be needed, I'm sure, to answer some of the questions, and they did most of the work. So Northampton, as well as other communities in the area and the state and country, has been looking at the issue of start times for quite some time. Each time the issue has come up here in Northampton, legitimate concerns and questions were raised, and each time, the decision was set aside. Late last year, the school committee decided to form a subcommittee to look at the potential obstacles and to determine whether they could be overcome. That was us. Most precisely, our charge was to, quote, "investigate the implementation issues surrounding a later start time at the high school, including effects on budget, school start, and end times district-wide, and any related topics." To accomplish the task, we investigated and discussed the following topics: length of school day, extra help time, transportation, athletics, extracurricular activities, the recreation department, Smith College classes, internships, after-school jobs, and childcare. We consulted the superintendent, the athletic director, and coaches, the guidance department, internship coordinator, the transportation supervisor, members of clubs and extracurricular activities, employers in Northampton, the recreation department, members of the administrative team, and NHS faculty, administrators, and staff. The subcommittee recommends the school committee approve a start time of eight fifteen and a release time of two thirty-five. These start and end times are based on shortening the school day by ten minutes, which is achieved by reducing the current passing, the current eight-minute passing time to six minutes and the length of each. on shortening the school day by 10 minutes, which is achieved by reducing the current passing, the current eight-minute passing time to six minutes, and the length of each of the blocks from 85 to 84 minutes. These changes still meet the Massachusetts Department of Education requirement. The Subcommittee makes this recommendation because the results of our research convinced the Subcommittee members that all the identified later start time obstacles and issues were addressed and have workable solutions. For instance, the extracurricular activities in clubs can adjust to a later release time. Most of the athletic competitions can accommodate a later release time or can be slightly adjusted. Special education transportation can be arranged within the different timeframe, extra teacher help time can still be provided, and Smith classes can still be accessed. In addition, and perhaps most importantly, the high school time change does not affect any other school start or end time, and there is no additional cost to the district. The current Northampton High School schedule is not perfect for all, nor will a new one suit everyone, but it will take into account the significant sleep research and current best practices around start times for adolescents, and it will make a positive change for the majority of students. The Subcommittee respectfully urges the school committee to adopt a later start time. Thank you. And that's my presentation. I guess I'd like to open it up to questions or comments, and, but if it's okay, if I can, I'm sure I can't answer all the questions. So, if other members of the committee, our Subcommittee, have comments, I would hope they would be heard.
Okay. So, do members of the school committee have any questions or about the report that you've received?
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to everyone that was involved in the committee. I know that it's quite a bit of work and time that's needed in order to put something like this together, and then collect the data, and then present it. So, I'm grateful for that. I do have a couple of questions. I'll start with the idea that you have here in regards to shaving one minute off of each class. I think in a day, in age where we think about education and the importance of student-teacher contact, and how we can get more of that in even recent discussions that we've had as a school committee on longer school day, I was surprised to see that one of the recommendations would be to actually take student-teacher contact away in order to accommodate the, you know, the change in the time. So, I don't know if you can speak to that at all. And I do know that the state requires the 990 hours of contact time, and by doing this, you certainly would make, we'd still make that number, and that's the state minimum, if you will. And we know that even in building our own budget, we know what the state says for a foundation budget for Northampton, but we always exceed that because we know the importance of education and what it costs. And so, I am a bit concerned and would like to hear as to what the rationale would be behind taking that time away from students and teachers.
Well, I will ask any member to add to this, but it certainly, I certainly understand your question and your concern. The rationale was that it's still, as I said, it still meets all the state requirements, and there is a cushion, and that we felt that the one minute that was saved in the class time and the two minutes saved between the four classes, which really only results in six minutes, of course, because there are only three passing times, would give the extra 10 minutes that enabled the start time to be just a little later. And we felt that the trade-off of those 10 minutes was worth it. That one minute, I mean, every minute counts, I don't discount that, but that was the rationale.
So, it seems like-
That one minute could make a difference, those four extra minutes that we added to the six in the passing time that we saved.
So, we had like a 30-hour overage before, I believe, and now it would go down to 18 hours or something like that? And you spoke to Nancy Athas about that, and she believes that with testing and different things that come about during the school year, we would still be, you know, in compliance with the 990 hours from the state?
I did send that section of the report to Nancy, and she didn't have any comments, so I don't know if that means she agrees with it or supports it. I just, that was our proposal, and there were no, I didn't get any comments, so.
Yeah, I would note, there are other high schools in the state that have 84-minute class periods, so clearly they're able to function.
Sure, but-
Well, no, without running into the problem with, you know, if you have, you know, when you have a late start for MCAS, or when you have, and that's what that cushion's necessary for. So, in terms of, in terms of meeting the requirement, it clearly is possible because those schools do.
Did you have more questions?
I do, but I would, you know, I would defer to somebody else. I'll come back.
Ms. Pick?
So, I also would really, really like to thank the committee for the work that's done. I know that you've done an enormous amount of research, and I especially appreciate the people who have already been involved for so long, who weren't too burnt out to do this all over again, to do it, and to do it in an, as objective a way, and to really answer all the questions that have been coming up, and this was so clearly outlined, I really want to appreciate that. In terms, and I don't mean to dismiss your concern at all, but I'd like to think that if the kids are a little bit more alert, it's going to make up for the one minute that they're going to miss in that class.
I was going to say that.
And I don't mean to dismiss learning time, but one minute in each class, if they're alert and they're getting it, so the teacher doesn't have to repeat something, because half the kid, half the kids were asleep the first time, that might work out just fine. Does, did your committee talk at all about how to gauge how well this is working, to how to kind of do a follow-up review?
No.
And you weren't charged with that, so I'm, so, fair to say that I'm a strong proponent of having a later start time at the high school, and I know this is really riding on the back of the fact that we're not going to have busing next year. So, that piece of it feels difficult to me, not about this, but the idea of not having high school busing, I still haven't quite wrapped my head around. But given that, I think that this is, I haven't come up with anything that doesn't make this a fabulous proposal, and I'm certainly, you know, going to listen to everything that's being said tonight. I just lost the point that I wanted to make. Oh, but I do think that it's going to be important for the school committee to take notes of the kinds of issues that we should be chucking in over the course of the year to see if things need to be fine-tuned in any way, what's not getting addressed. You know, you're saying that most of the sports, you know, are going to be able to accommodate. Well, I want to know about the ones that can't. And, and to know, you know, from the athletic director how this is working, and I think that it would be important, if we pass this, to make sure that we get some sort of report, not, not at the end of the year, but partway through, so that we know, you know, are there, are there problems that need to be addressed, are there issues of concern?
I wasn't sure if there was an answer or-
Sure, I haven't answered, I mean, it wasn't really a question, it was a comment.
Mr. Flynn?
So, I mean, one of the things that comes up a lot for us, people ask us regarding the start time, is why in the face of all this research do we delay, and why hasn't there been consensus? And obviously, there's something here that makes it drag on, and I think one of the things is that, as an elected body, we represent a wide range of constituents. And a lot of times when we've looked at this issue, and surveys have been conducted, there hasn't been this huge number of people in support of it. It's been sort of right around that mid-range, with faculty, with students, with parents. And I'm noticing that in the results of your survey, two-thirds of the people surveyed are not in favor of it in your survey. It's consistent with what-
That's teachers, Mike, I'm sorry.
Oh, teachers, okay.
I mean, we only surveyed the teachers.
Right.
And the faculty, I mean, the administrators.
Right, but there's been, there's surveys done of the community and, over the years with this, and it all comes out consistently where it's either really 50/50, or it's, you know, but it's not anything where we think, wow, this is, there's just a movement here with everyone, like, why are we not doing this? And that's why there's this delay here, because there's a lot of things beyond just looking at research that we have to take into account for. And so, that's, I guess, to offer some clarification for people who've questioned that for a while.
I think Howard wants to say something too, but I would just answer that by, we acknowledge that fact, but I believe the parts, part of the reason there has been resistance, both, you know, at the school level, the faculty level, and the community level, is that all the issues that we addressed and feel we have workable solutions for were raised as obstacles. And since we've answered those, or at least we feel we have, maybe not perfectly, and there will need to be some tweaking along the way, but because we feel we've answered them, I think that that would alleviate many people's concerns, or they might feel more supportive of a move, knowing that it doesn't mean that Northampton High School won't be able to participate in athletics or athletic competitions. It certainly, they'll still be able to take Smith classes. There may be different level, classes or time periods, but they'll still be able to take them, they'll be able to find them, they'll be able to do their internships, they'll be able to do after-school jobs. I mean, all these things that people were concerned about, I believe have been answered, so, at least to a large degree.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, I think it's, all the people who've spoken to me who were opposed to a start time, were not really opposed to a change in start time. They were opposed to a change in start time because they thought it would mean the end of-
Track.
Or the end of swimming, or, you know. And I think what we've done, we looked at whether or not it would mean that, and it doesn't. In fact, doesn't, in most of those cases, it doesn't have really any impact on when practice would be or when competitions would be at all. So, you know, I think, and the other one, you know, the help time with teachers, I think is a big one, obviously, that what it actually does is that it, it's funny, it gives more options in terms of when students can meet with teachers, because if you're, you know, essentially, the only people who are affected would be people who are doing sports and, meaning coaches or athletes after school, and everybody else is still perfectly free to go ahead and do teacher help after school. And it opens up the space before school, which currently is first period, when we've heard, we have 900 kids, a huge, large number are asleep. And instead, it'll be the kids who need to come in for work could do it then, at the same exact time that they're currently coming in to go to school. And so, it, you know, in other words, it means you could arrange to meet with your teacher before or after school, instead of, instead of what currently happens, particularly in season, is that there are days when you simply cannot meet with a teacher after school because you or your teacher is going to a competition somewhere. So, I think it actually creates more flexibility, and doesn't, it doesn't end that. People, it just means it'd be a different time.
Right, but so the ones who are going to be seeking that extra help are the ones who are struggling, need that. So, one option would be for those kids to get up just as early as they are now to come and get the extra help.
Actually, a little later, depending-
They wouldn't have to get up every day. I mean, maybe once a week, and they'll have four night, four mornings where they can sleep a little in. Steve also wanted to say something, is that okay?
Thank you. My name is Steve Harrell.
Can you talk into the mic, Steve? Thanks.
For the people at home.
Thank you. My name is Steve Harrell, and I was a member of the Special Ad Hoc Committee. And just to respond to what Mike Flynn raised, we did do the teacher survey. There were other questions, of course, besides that one, but I, I do want to say that in a school, seven school districts around the city of Minneapolis, which has generated one of the best and most comprehensive, our research studies that have been done on this issue, about half of the teachers beforehand, before a change, were opposed to it, and then several years later, when they were asked again if they would like to go back, only 3.5% said that they would like to go back. Now, that kind of statistic is reported in many other school districts across the country, so bear that in mind. Now, also, I would like to say that we also provided in our survey room for comments, and many of the comments revealed why many of the teachers say they are opposed to the change. And here I want to say with great respect, I think the Northampton High School faculty is fantastic. My daughter went there for four years. I've had contact with a lot of the faculty, and they are just terribly impressive and do a fantastic job. They know a lot about their subjects, and they know a lot about teaching and education, but in the comments on the survey, they did unfortunately reveal that they were not familiar with the research on start times. And I don't blame them for that, they're very busy, but they said they would make comments that were completely opposed to what the research shows. For example, a number of them said they are opposed to the later start time because they think that students will just stay up later and still not get enough sleep. That has been completely discounted numerous times in a lot of research, so that was just not right. They also made some comments that they didn't think that the change of the 45 minutes was enough, was not significant enough. That is, also flies in the face of the research and evidence. Every 15 minutes counts. The same amount of time that the start time is delayed is about how much extra sleep the students receive. So, I think we really have to think very carefully about putting too much emphasis on that 65% of the faculty that say they were opposed. Thank you.
I'd like to follow up on that, what Steve was stating. And in the back, when we have the appendix, we have some Appendix C responses for start time survey. And when the teachers were asked, the different percentages, the highest percentage of, as a staff member, would you have to make any changes in the following if the high school schedule changed? The highest percentage was 54% were for non-school-related after-school commitments. And it also kind of reminds me, I was talking to some students, and I asked, this boy said he was totally against it, and I said, why? He said, well, it might help me get more sleep, but it's not the way things are, and I like to keep things the way things are. I don't like change. And I said, do you think that you could use more sleep? He said, well, yes, but I probably wouldn't sleep very well because it changed. And he didn't like change. And, and I'm thinking that just a lot of people sometimes just don't like change, and change itself is a difficult adjustment. But once we get to where we're going, then it might be easier. And as for Mike, Mr. Flynn's comment, and regarding, what were you talking about, Mike? I know, I lost it too.
The survey, and then the after-school help and before-school help.
All right, well, if it comes back, I'll be back.
It was gold, whatever I said.
I'm sure it was gold.
Mr. Bourne?
I had a quick question about the Smith College classes. So, I was just reading through it, and it said NHS students wouldn't be able to take non-AM classes anymore, no classes during the third period at Northampton High, and classes meeting at 1 and 110 they couldn't take. And I was just curious to, I'm just trying to get a sense of, like, what percent of classes that they currently take, would they be able to take under this scenario? And, I mean, it may be a great, it may be like a greater good argument that it's something we need to cut because there's, you know, it's more important to have a later start time than, and this is, you know, one of the, you know, prices we have to pay, but just, I kind of didn't, reading through that, didn't understand what the, like, how much that would limit the offerings that they currently have when you make all these calculations?
It's a little bit of a moving target. First of all, Smith could change their schedule, not maybe this coming year, because that might, it's probably too late to do that.
Well, I'm saying, based on- Well, I'm saying, based on the current situation, I guess-
Based on the current schedule, I, I'm real, I don't know that we know, can you exactly answer that question?
Is it half or three quarters, or?
I think they just have to be more flexible. It's not that they can't take it, that it's that it's still available. We decided that there were two courses, classes available.
They just have to take-
Currently, they may have to take it-
Different courses, right?
Not necessarily different courses, because that's one of the things they say, is that they do go for the courses, but at different times also, that there are a lot of different times available throughout the day, and it doesn't necessarily have to be exactly when it is now. So it still ended up being two courses. As far as the actual courses, we really couldn't tell because Smith rotates their, what courses they offer at different times. And so certain people are looking for certain classes, like, more so than others. Best would be the one to answer.
And there are also, I don't know, Best can answer or add to this, there are also, I mean, there are other classes later in the day. Now, I know that's not within the confines of the school day, but if a student is very anxious to take a Smith class, they-
It's usually, it's in the evening.
Later in the day, like at 1:00 or, I mean, excuse me, 2:00 or 3:00, something like that.
Also Holyoke Community College.
I mean, there are other colleges too, but that's a different, that's a different scenario, but-
The answer is we just-
It, it will change. And I think it'll take some flushing out, but the bottom line is whether, I don't, I can't tell you whether there'll be exactly the same number of options. There, I can tell you for sure there will be options, and I, I just, I just don't really know. Best, do you, can you add to that?
Yeah, I wanted to add a couple of things. There is no question that there are, that there are more 9:00 classes than 10:00 classes. But they would still have the, the option of taking 10:00 classes and classes later in the day and in the evening, and a number of kids already do that, do that. And I thought after we finished our report that one of the things I wish we had included and didn't was a list of the courses that kids take at Smith that really backed up what our student reps told us, that most kids look for a course that fits in their schedule, they're not looking for a specific course. And if you see the list of, of course, just quickly to name a few, afterlife and world religions, plant physiology, introduction to comparative politics, textiles and fashion in contemporary Africa, extraordinary events in life and the climate, introduction to neuroscience, Chinese one, elementary Russian, modern Korean history, landscape, environment, and design, writing about sports, you can see the range is, is huge.
We should all go back to college.
It's huge. And I did find that one of the things that concerned me was where there were a lot of kids that were looking to advance in sequences in languages or in math, and, yeah, there seemed to be some, but not a lot. So that's what I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thanks, Best.
Kind of one other question. Sure. Yes, and then we also wanted to ask Principal Athas if she wanted to add any comments, but go ahead.
I just had a question about the six-minute passing time. I mean, I don't know what it's like to move quickly, that quickly from one part of the school. Is that, do you think that's pretty doable?
Well, the, the teachers on the committee felt that it was.
Okay.
The survey?
I certainly can't answer that.
Yeah.
That, that, you know, no matter how, they'll get to their classes. And faculty, teachers are very flexible, allowing students to use the restroom if they have time during passing time. But for the most part, the faculty thought that it was possible.
That's in appendix C.
Mr. Chef, Chef La.
One question you, you may have already answered again, but just for my own clarity. In here, there's the suggestion that extra help could take place before school. There's also the suggestion that football practice, for instance, might be better off before school. And there's also the suggestion that-
That's Howard's favorite.
-child care for some families would be made easier because the high school students will be home later in the morning. So, which to me seems a little bit odd, because shouldn't they be sleeping instead of taking care? Similarly. But, so I guess I'm just wondering, there seems to be a lot of, well, let's just use this time in the morning for stuff that doesn't fit anywhere else, and that just seems a little counterintuitive to me. That's-
Well, yeah, the answer is pretty straightforward. It's, right now, we have 900 kids, about 120 of them who have to get up to get on a bus by 6:30 in the morning. All the other 900 have to be there at 7:20 or 7:25. Instead of that, the football, it was only for the, right now, football doesn't have enough time to practice.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they, they have space between the end of school and the start of practice, and then it gets dark during the month of November. They're the only fall sport that has a season in November. So currently, their, their practices are cut way short because the only field we have is the playing field, which they can't practice on because they'll ruin it. So, so all the thing would be then, for football would be, they could either put their practice right at the end of school, which would actually be starting sooner than it currently is, which would give them more daylight. And then if they needed to go to teacher help and things, they could do that before school. And again, it's for three weeks instead of for the whole year. It's for the 60 kids instead of the 900. So it's not counterintuitive at all. It's really about adding up the numbers.
So we're saying that, that we're just taking the less shift to evils in a sense?
No, not really. No, we're saying, we're saying, look, it take, we only have 24 hours in a day.
Right.
We should put the school chunk in the, in the chunk that makes as much sense as we can make it in terms of what we know about sleep and, and student outcomes. Put it there, and if we can, and, and again, where it goes exactly has to do with things like the sun sets at a certain time, we have competitions that have to get done before the sun sets. So we can't move it as late, actually, as the research would say. And the, the other sorts of problems, you know, they're not really problems, they're just, look, you, you just, you do stuff when you do it. I mean, I don't know when, when, I don't know when you brush your teeth, but you do it sometime during the day.
Yes.
You know?
Most days. But then, but, you know, but it's also the same suggestion comes in for basketball as well.
But again-
As a possibility. I'm just trying to-
It also comes in for basketball as well, precisely because, right now, basketball practice is way too late during the, and again, just during the two weeks before the schedule starts, before the competition schedule. So for two weeks, trying to put five teams practicing for two hours, you can quickly do the math, and you can see that if you start doing it at the end of the school day, you, you get done very late at night, okay? And the coaches do a good job of trying to overlap and share space in the gym, but it still ends up with practice ending around 10:00. It's pretty late.
Yeah.
But it's for two weeks. Of course, their game schedules, they get home around then too, when they have away games. So it's kind of the norm for basketball people, is to be getting in kind of late and then doing their homework after that. So the idea is that if you can move the start of the school day, just even for those same kids, later by 45 minutes, you're not going to, you're right, they're still going to be out until 10:00, coming home from an away game, but they'll have an extra 45 minutes of sleep before they go to school the next morning.
And I just wanted to make an observation though.
Brian?
Passing time, lots of things can happen during passing time. You know, it's time for kids to talk to teachers really quickly, go to the restroom. So I don't want to, you know, I don't want to pass that by, just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
But the teachers were asked about that in, in their survey, and it was, it was fine for that. It was 40% for all, all the different sites. Look in the appendix C.
46%. Right, these, they, look at this number.
Okay. So-
I do have one other question. It's safe. When you, we're talking a lot about teachers being able to meet with students before school and/or after school. Have you, what do the teachers tell you about that? I mean, I don't want to be taken for granted that, okay, now teachers can come in earlier or stay, and stay later. I mean, they, they are, I know they're, they're bound to give a certain amount of time outside the classroom, and it's going to be, I would assume up to them how it's going to, you know, when they're going to offer their hours. So I don't think we can assume that somebody needs help, that, well, they can meet early with their teacher. I mean, did you get any sense from teachers about, about their feeling on that?
Not specifically, but at least the teachers on our committee felt that there would be now the option of doing it earlier rather than later, or, you know, before school rather than after. Some might take advantage of that, and some might not be able to. But now, no one would come in early.
No student's going to come in early, any earlier than they already have to.
So this allows at least a little, that, that flexibility, which they didn't have before. But I don't know how many student, uh, teachers, excuse me, would take, and/or students would take advantage of coming in earlier.
That would be one of the issues I would think that we'd want to pay attention to, are students getting the time that they need?
Right.
Or can their teachers offer them the time that they, that works?
Mr. Meyer, did you have a?
No, I actually was, I just, Stephanie stole my question. I just, I just looked at the, the survey said 48% that they would have to make a change in help time, and I just was wondering whether there had been, you know, when you have a survey that's not real specific, was there any attempt to follow up and say, well, what, what change is that? Is that restricting it? Is that, because that, that would be very important, I think, for-
We kept the survey fairly, very short and, and as simple as we could. None of us had time to evaluate, and none of us really had the experience. And we didn't want teachers to have to spend an hour filling out the survey. So we didn't do any follow-up.
Okay. Could we?
Maybe Lucy could stay up there for a moment, but Nancy was waiting to respond to something that was said a few people ago, so I want to make sure she gets a chance to be heard.
I just wanted to respond to the Smith College, and I've been, think I've been on a committee for five years investigating this as well. But I just can't emphasize the importance of the collaboration with Smith College, and I would really like to look at a proposed schedule of what the hours would look like during the day, because most of our kids take classes at 9:00 or 10:30, and we have the two-hour window, and then maybe the 1:00 class. And honestly, if they, probably about 80 students right now are taking classes over the course of the full year, and if they weren't able to do it, it would make a huge impact on our high school schedule. We do not have enough electives for seniors. And so we can be flexible, we could have the kids start at 9:00. Some kids are doing that, you know, they go to Smith for three classes and come to us for one. But if it impacts in any way, a large majority of students who can't use that time at Smith College, it would be impactful to, to the high school. We couldn't house the kids. So.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Zahowski.
I had a question on appendix E. This goes back to sports and athletics. At first, when I read it and I went down, and it was very thoroughly done, and every sport was spoken to with times and, and information, the first thing that really was appealing to me was that many of the paragraphs ended by saying that allowing even for 45 minutes of travel, a 25, a 2:35 dismissal creates no conflict with class time or daylight. And I, and I, I thought that was great, because one of the concerns I have is that when you have an away game, many times, there's an early dismissal for a sports team because they need to get a, do a competition. And this reads, or at least I understand it, to suggest that the 2:35 dismissal creates no conflict with class time. And I think of my own experience as a varsity coach and riding a bus, and I started to do the math, and it, the math just doesn't work for me, so I, I just wanted maybe someone to speak to that or clarification. If, if we get out at 2:35 and we take a 45-minute bus ride, we get to our destination at 3:20 for a 4:00 competition. Now, that sounds pretty good, because there's still 40 minutes before kickoff or first pitch or-
It's really 3:30.
Or, or whatever it is. Say again?
It's really 3:30, because you can't, the moment you leave the classroom, you can't-
Right, so, right, exactly. So my point exactly, that if you're getting out at 2:35 and students are asked to go to the locker room, change their clothes, get their gear, get the equipment, load the bus, and get on their way, that it is, Howard, closer to 3:30. I know for home games myself, as a, as a high school baseball coach, we get to our field at 2:30, and our competitions are at 3:30. And within that hour, we have just about enough time to accomplish what we need to do before we start. By the time we put our cleats on, we stretch, we throw, we take our infield during our allotted time, the other team takes their infield at the allotted time, and we meet with the umpires, you know, it takes about an hour. So to arrive 30 minutes before the competition just doesn't seem feasible. And I was surprised that Jim Miller said that that certainly was fine, or the coaches that you spoke to said there wouldn't be any conflict with, with class time, because I, I don't see how it works with that amount of time, so.
I mean, I'll let Howard answer that. I, I mean, they're a little tight.
The 45 minutes plus the 30 minutes is, you know, 30 minutes for a warm-up and, and 45 minutes for a, for a travel, which obviously varies a lot.
Sure.
Yeah, and you, and, yeah, there's a big difference. And there's also no way to anticipate in terms of the warm-up, because, again, the weather can affect how much time it takes for a warm-up, as well as just the field conditions and a whole host of different things. So that was, those are just ballpark numbers, because, well, they're ballpark numbers. The interesting thing for, again, the, the game is really interesting, the scheduled times of competitions right now, the, most of them have a lot of slack before sunset. I guess, because I don't know, unless you, unless you go into really lots of extra innings in baseball, in general, a 4:00 start should get you done. The, the sports that don't have that kind of leeway are in the fall, because it's an hour sooner that the sun sets in the fall than it is in the spring. And those are the sports that I think I highlighted here, you know, that field hockey, for example, which has really got the biggest crunch, because they play two games on one field, and they play in the fall. And they do not play on lit fields. So they have no, no wiggle room, you know, the sun sets. And they currently have that problem right now. I mean, we, one of their coaches talked to us, and, and played out their games, their JV games, which they do second after the varsity games, routinely get cut short in, at the end of October because of sunset. So really, that, that's an issue that needs to be addressed in any way. They need to figure out some sort of a scheduling thing so as to either be able to, like, just for those, again, just for those end-of-season games, either be able to borrow a field from, like, another college? Like, for example, if we could borrow a field for three games at Smith, or if, you know, Westfield could borrow a field for three games at Westfield State, to do that, so they could play them simultaneously? Or to schedule those games for the weekend? Because those, those games right now, the JV is cut short because of sunset. It's, it's a real issue, and it obviously isn't made better by school getting out later. The, the only two ways you can do it are either reschedule, just like that, which they ought to do right now, they haven't, but they ought to. That would be the simplest and best way, I think, really. The other way, obviously, is early dismissal for three games, which, you know, as, again, as crucial as class time is, a whole lot of kids from the high school went and watched the movie Lincoln. And now, they missed all their other classes that weren't really Lincoln movie-related for that day. They missed way more time in each of those classes than they would miss if they played field hockey and got dismissed half an hour early every time. So, you know, there's, there's always a trade-off here, and I personally, as much as I think going to see a movie Lincoln is a fine thing, I actually think that participation in sports is a better thing. And so I feel it's worth that kind of trade-off. If we feel it's worth it to go to a movie, I think we should actually feel it's worth it to participate in sports.
So I guess my, I, I don't know if I got my question answered. My question was that, and what I was trying to bring to light is that, under the current structure and what's stated here, it doesn't seem as though an early dismissal is needed. My comment would be that I believe that even with a 2:35 dismissal and a 4:00 competition, students might still find themselves getting out early in order to get to the site and do the proper warm-up.
Right. And so then my suggestion is that except for the field hockey, and, you know-
Because it reads in here, and anyone that might read this document would say, well, that sounds better than the current situation, because-
Mostly, we don't have early dismissal, though. I mean, mostly at the high school, there's only early dismissal for the things that, well, I say early dismissal. Skiing has early dismissal, golf has early dismissal. Golf gets eight times, they get dismissed early.
I was under the impression that away games at some times during the year were dismissed early.
Not very often.
It's common practice at my high school, but I guess-
Here in Northampton, they found a way not to do it.
We had to know. Mostly not. I mean, according to at least the information I collected, mostly not. And so-
Lastly, I would just make a comment on the, on the swimming, because it, the pool is, is a hot topic, certainly. And we, we have practice currently at 3:00 for swimmers, and we're getting out at 2:35. I'm wondering how 25 minutes is sufficient time to get to JFK to the pool, especially kids that might be taking the bus here to get here.
Well, the only answer about that is that, again, I've seen lots of swimmers elsewhere long, who take that much amount of time to get there, so I don't really, you know, yeah, they'll have to go directly. I mean, that's true. I mean, that's true.
Yeah, or everything gets pushed a little bit further for the rec.
Well, I don't think we can do that with the pool. I don't want to do that.
I don't want to do that, no, but they, they have different hours, they don't just go after school, they also, in the evening sometimes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about, uh, the report that you have before you? Okay. And, um, well, thank you very much, Lucy, and thank you to the committee members for all their service.
Thanks for asking us to do this, I think. Thank you.
Okay. So, um, the, uh-
So what do we do with this now, that we're here? I mean, um, can we make a motion to vote on it? Do we need more information? I mean, what do we, I, it just feels to me like we're just moving ahead, and maybe that's what we are doing, and maybe that's what we're supposed to be doing, but I'm just kind of-
Well, clearly, there's been, uh, this is a, we asked a committee to work on this and provide us with a report, and so we now receive the report, and it's, you know, the committee, uh, can, uh, it's the committee's pleasure, I suppose, that you can, we didn't advertise that there'd be a vote tonight, but we could certainly take it under advisement and then put it on a future agenda for, for an actual-
Well, I would like to move that we take a vote on this at some point. I mean, I'm not quite sure how to go about doing it, but I would definitely like to take a vote on this.
And that's certainly, it can certainly be placed on a future agenda, I think that's-
Okay, well, I move to have this placed on an agenda as soon as possible, since we have the report and we have what we need, and if we need more, then to, to say what we need and to go back and get what we need, if, if that's what it is.
Could I ask, before you make your motion final, to, to actually specify perhaps for our next meeting, so that this doesn't get pushed out?
Right, okay, I would like to move that it be done exactly at the next meeting, so it doesn't get pushed away.
I will second the motion.
Our next meeting, are we talking about the one this next-
Regular meeting.
The, the next regular meeting.
The June pool board school.
Unless you'd like to vote about it tonight.
So, so there's been a motion made and seconded to have this item placed now on our June, uh, regular meeting agenda.
And is that why we can't vote on it tonight? Because it needs to have, and that's what I was wondering and thought, anyway, that we need to have it, uh, have it moved ahead? I mean, or could we vote on it tonight? I mean, or is there more information needed? Because if there's something just left out there hanging, we'd like to know what it is, so that it could be addressed and then go on and off this plate. I mean, like, let's go forward.
Okay, well, I'm, you're looking at me, I-
Well, I'm looking at you, because I don't know what the rules are. I don't know if, because it wasn't advertised, it did vote-
Well, I know that we had a report presented to us tonight.
So I can make a motion to vote on it tonight?
Uh, I suppose you could do that, sure. Yeah, you could make that motion, certainly.
I don't see why not. Does anybody see why not?
You have to make the motion.
Lisa sees why not.
You have to make the motion, then-
Well, I would like to make a motion to vote on, um, to vote to approve a late start time. And make it tonight. What else do I have to say? What else do you want to say?
So there's been a motion made to approve, now, are you specifying when this approval of the late-
How about now?
You're making a motion to, to propose a specific proposal that's been brought forward, is that correct?
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry, Ms.
You said you just want to vote on a change in the start time, right? But you're, are you, you're voting, you're making a motion for the specific proposal that was brought forward by the committee?
Well, I would think so, because there was a lot of work put into that, and there was a lot of thought, and we talked to a lot of people, and although I didn't personally talk to, um, like, Mr. Miller, and, and I talked to other people, but, um, we had a lot of, um, positive feedback from everybody that we talked to, and, um, so I just don't see why not. Maybe I'm missing something. I'm still kind of new, and I won't be able to keep saying that, but, right now, I still am, I don't know what I'm doing. All the way, do I make a motion for now? How?
So, uh, well, there's been a motion-
A couple motions.
There's a motion on the table, but, uh, but then the maker of the motion wanted to then propose a new motion, so-
Well, I didn't know I could. See, that's what I was trying to ask you, is because it wasn't posted on the agenda, we are going to vote, do we have-
So why don't you withdraw your original and make a-
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to vote on this, um, to vote to approve, um, the proposal that was set forth by the ad hoc committee, and, um, yes, tonight, now.
I will second the motion.
Okay, the motion's been seconded. So now the question before the school committee is on voting to, uh, approve the recommendation of the, uh, of the committee.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
If we voted no tonight, does it mean we could vote, I mean, if I want to, if I want to vote on this in June, does it mean I have to vote no tonight? That's my question.
I have a question, I have a question, why would you want to-
Because you talk to a lot more people in the community than I do.
Okay, so you want to go back and take it to the community, is what, is-
I want to vote on this in June, so I, I want to know what I need to do to do that. I want to wait a month.
Okay.
A month.
If you vote it down, it, you, doesn't mean that you can't wait-
If I vote no, can I, can I do that and still-
Yes, you can have another motion in June, yeah, yeah.
So, um, two things. Um, one is that I'm going to vote in favor of this tonight, because I think that we have heard from the community for years. I think that, um, you know, this committee has done all the work that we asked them to do in terms of, let me go back. I don't know how long ago it was, where we said as a committee, if we could make this happen, we wanted to make it happen. And we didn't vote for it, because we felt like there were some unanswered questions. If you feel like some of the questions, if anybody feels that some of these questions aren't answered yet, then I think they should be put forward tonight, so that we can get the answers to them. But if our questions have been answered, I don't know what the purpose of delaying is. I think we've been hearing from the community for a very, very long time, and I think that if we're going to vote this in, the sooner we do it, the better, so that people can start planning. That having been said, I just want to raise one concern, and I alluded to it before. But right now, the committee was able to bring this proposal to us, because we're no longer going to have high school busing next year. And we haven't even heard yet if, um, the ALTA is going to bring us a proposal that says if an override passes, then one of the things that, you know, they're going to recommend is that we're going to put busing back in, and then what happens to this plan? There's no provision for that whatsoever. This is entirely riding on the fact that we're no longer going to do busing, because we haven't figured out how we can afford busing and this change. Um, so, I, I'm raising that as, as a point, because I think it's, you know, we, I don't think as a committee, we've actually heard from the community about the fact that we're not going to have high school busing. I'm not sure, as, as public as we think we've made it, I don't know if all the people who are affected by that change are really aware of it yet. So, I don't see, personally, I don't see busing coming, if we don't have busing next year, I don't see it coming back, because I don't think that if, I think if we have more money, that that's probably not going to be where we put it back. If we've gotten families to accommodate next year for no busing, I think we're probably going to stay with that. But I just, I just want to raise it as, as a potentially difficult issue out there.
That's why I'm asking, and that, for those issues of whether or not now is to, I would like to vote on it tonight, if we can, but if those issues are important and obstructing, then I would like to move until June.
Could, could we have the superintendent address the issue?
So the question of busing is, right now, our list of priorities, the things we bring back with a successful override is not complete. However, I can tell you that on our most recent draft, we are looking to bring the busing back to the high school, if the override passes. However, I do think that this plan is workable even with busing brought back to the high school.
Do you elaborate on that?
Sure.
I'd be thrilled to hear anything about that.
Well, if you look at the schedule, that they've proposed, the morning busing would work, the afternoon busing as it's current, oh, I can't find it right now, but I've looked at it enough to know. Uh, the morning busing would work, the afternoon busing, as we do it right now, wouldn't work, but we could create a solution to transport the few students who do take the bus home. We could have a hub system that would take the kids to JFK.
But only in the afternoon, not in the morning.
You know, that killed me, Howard.
So, with yours, making that statement, and feeling assured that we would be able to work this through, I am totally in favor of supporting this and voting on it tonight.
So, I just quickly scanned through our current collective bargaining agreement. I just want to know something, in case I'm missing it. Are teachers contractually obligated to provide help time after school? Because I'm looking, and their service is from ten minutes prior to five minutes after. That's what's in the collective bargaining agreement. So they're not, so I know they do it, because they're professionals, because they love teaching, and it's part of what they do. But what's making me uncomfortable is that, um, I was a high school teacher with two kids who got off the bus at three-thirty-five, and my help time with my students lasted until I could drive at a safe speed from Terrence Falls to meet my kids as they got off the bus. So I'm looking, and I guess that's why my question about, did you inquire of these people? Because I don't know, from looking at the survey data, whether these are dentist appointments that might be rescheduled, or whether this is a second job, which teachers do work second jobs, or whether this is something that can, like, an elementary school student getting off the bus, which can't be changed very easily, which would cause them to incur significant additional cost. I'm not saying that that necessarily would decide my vote, but that's why I will vote no tonight, because I don't, without that information, a very, very important people in our system, I don't want to vote for this. And I, I just don't, I don't think, I know that there's a tremendous amount of work done, but if you take the survey and you see the response rates as high as they are, fifty-four percent, the majority, non-school related after-school commitments, forty-eight percent help, forty-eight percent said help time for students, but I have no idea what that means. Does that mean they would do more? Does that mean they would do none? Does that mean, and so without, I'd, I'd like to get a handle on that information, and, and I'll talk to high school teachers, if they're willing to talk to me, about how it would affect them. And if it's not going to affect them negatively, then I'll be happy to vote for it in June. Other, other comments? Mr. Moore?
Yeah, you know, I, I think it will all depend on whether or not people are willing to, um, go to work at the current time they currently go to work right now. If they're willing to go to work at the time they currently go to work right now, do their help time what will then be before school, they will actually be working the same exact day they currently work, in terms of the beginning and end of their day, and providing just as much help time. So, really, you know, that's, that's the answer, is that if they're willing to work the hours they currently work, they, they don't have, they don't, they don't have, their sk, their door-to-door time, schedule, wouldn't change at all. If they're not willing to do that, if, if, if basically they, you know, insist upon making it not work, well, they can make it not work. But that's, you, you know, all I can say is if you, if they're willing to go to work at seven-fifteen now, which they are contractually obligated to do right now, if instead they choose to do work exactly by contract, and then insist on doing their extra uncompensated work after school, then it will be later. But if they wish to do it during the same exact door-to-door time as they follow right now, it will be the same exact door-to-door time they follow right now.
I think, though, that just, Mr. Shuffler said earlier, was that the students are in the building at the end of the day now, and there is a period of help time that they can access. What we're now saying, and now what we're saying is that we would like the majority of students not to be in the building at seven-thirty. That's right, because we want them to be sleeping. You said, you know, we, again, the counter is that, well, only some of the kids would need to come in on some of the days. But if you, if your solution to the problem of, of teachers not being available later than two-forty, is that all of them will just work the same day, that means that what you're saying is help time will now shift to the morning, when we don't want the majority, right, in making this policy, when we don't want the majority of them to be there.
They won't be there. Because they aren't there after school either.
But that, how will that not have a significant impact on additional help?
They aren't in help time after school, the majority of them are not in help time after school either. The classrooms are not full after school.
Are we talking about two days a week, I believe, that they are asked?
I mean, you know, it's, it's, it really is just additionally, it's not, you know, anything else. It's total hours of sleep, it's not, not hours, you know, it, it, do you see what I'm saying? The, the classrooms aren't filled in the afternoon after school. It's not the majority of the classes, because they, we, look, they would look full, because right now, they have like thirty-five kids in them, they would look full with half of them in there. They aren't, they don't look full, except for, again, the robotics classroom is always looking full. But that's because those kids are working twenty-four hours a day forever, we're not going to help their sleep issue. Okay? Um, the, and, and so on, with the theater shops and everything else, those kids, we're not going to help their sleeps, because they're working twenty-four hours a day.
They'll still sleep in.
Well, yeah, but when a show is coming on, they're not going to sleep for that week anyhow. And this is not going to affect that. I think it's, it's, the other thing that's interesting, is if we do get busing back, that would mean there would be a busload of kids arriving at, what is it, seven-oh-five, roughly?
No, that's not my plan.
That's not your plan? Okay, that would be one of the ways it could happen. Anyway, so.
Okay. Other, um, other comments or questions regarding the motion that's on the table? Ms. Minnick?
Only peripherally, but, uh, you just said something, you just said it's about the, it's about the number of hours of sleep. So have I missed the point of a lot of this talk? Because all along, I've been hearing that it's not just the hours of sleep, it's when they sleep.
Right.
And it's the circadian rhythm, and it's that we need to be moving it, shifting it, because they go to sleep later and they wake up later.
Right, that's why, starting later.
So it's not just about the number of hours of sleep. So, to Downey's point and to Andrew's point, it really is about, they shouldn't have to get up and come in and do extra help before school, because that cuts into not just the number of hours of sleep, it really does change what time they have to get up in. We're trying to make them get up later.
Right, so if we leave it the way it is, all nine hundred have to be at school at seven-thirty. If we move it to eight-fifteen, far less than that will have to be at school at seven-thirty.
I don't dispute that, but there are some kids, you're, you're right.
And they may still leave it at night.
So, so we're doing what's right for the greater number of people, which is what Andrew said from the very beginning. Didn't I hear you say the words, "is for the greater good"?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so.
They're all, everybody's good, because very few people do an hour a day of extra help time with a teacher, every single day of the year. Very few students do that.
Few teachers are there.
Okay, so, uh-
We're over here.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Um, I think there's, there's, there's great stuff in here, this, this is a very thorough document. The one thing that troubles me is the, the shaving of the minutes. And I know that we could say, well, a minute here, a minute there, that's a minute. And embedded in here is also the suggestion that if the school day can't be shortened, that it would go from an eight-ten to a two-forty, you know, which, and I, so, that is, is, see.
And then swapping the time between classes also taking that away too, or just taking away those extra four minutes of, um, of class time? Because if you didn't do both, you could have it, you could just lose, you know, you could go eight-ten to two-thirty still.
I, I, as I said earlier, I think passing time, there's value to passing time.
Is what?
Value to passing time.
It's not like lunchtime, they don't get that anymore. Ms. Minnick?
Just, just one final thing. I would feel, despite the superintendent's reassurance that he thinks that even if we restore busing, that we could still make this work, I'd really like to see that plan. I don't, I, you know, I, I trust him almost implicitly, but I really would like to see what the effects are going to be for, you know, how it, how it's going to look. So, I would far, far prefer to be making this decision in a month.
Okay. Okay, so there's been a motion, uh, that's been made and seconded to, I believe, adopt the recommendations of the, of the committee, the admin committee. Is there any other-
Point of order, could I just ask you, I mean, if, if the majority of the committee members vote against, in favor of this, this evening, then there could be minority reconsideration of it, brought to the next meeting. But if the majority of people voted down this evening, will it still come back to us in June, or-
That would be my question.
Or will it be defeated, in which case the minority would be the people who voted for it?
And could they not seek minority reconsideration?
They could.
Or can I not make a motion if it doesn't do that? We just do it next month?
I'm just asking, because that was, that was Alden's original concern, and it is my concern as well. I hate to see, I don't want to see us vote no tonight and have a lot of people think that it's because we don't care, or that, and, and I want to be sure, I, I really would prefer this were next month.
So, so just to be clear, your rules do allow for minority reconsideration if something fails on a vote, and so presumably that would work for the proponents or the opponents, so.
Take it back.
Yeah, so it could be brought back. Did you have a question or comment? Okay. Okay, so then I will, why don't I ask the clerk to call the roll, just because this could be a close vote.
And how are we wording?
Do you want to start by reading the motion? Everybody first, and then we'll vote, and do a roll call. The motion on the table that was seconded, no, the one that's right now.
This month.
For the start time to be later.
Is the understanding that this would take effect as of September of this year?
Yeah.
So I'm sorry, just to sound clear, even if we vote no tonight, it means we could still vote yes in June.
Okay. It's going to be brought back.
I'll bring it right back.
So, Lord, do you have the motion on the table that blew made and Stephanie seconded? To approve the proposal for the high school late start tonight? Can you just read what the wording is that you have?
Can you give us some wording?
Okay. By the committee, yeah, by, yeah. Okay, so, so then I would ask the clerk to call the roll on this vote.
May I read something?
Yes.
Mr. Alden Moore.
No.
Mr. Blue Law.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Flynn.
No.
Mr. Darren Meyer.
No.
Ms. Minnick.
No.
Mr. Howard Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Stephanie Pitt.
Yes.
Mr. Ian Shuffler.
No.
Mr. Ed Coughlin.
No.
Mr. Morris.
Yes.
Ms. Stephanie Pitt.
Yes.
Mr. Ian Shuffler.
No.
Mr. Ed Coughlin.
No.
Mr. Morris.
Okay, so the motion does not carry.
Can I make a motion to bring it back and vote next month on this, in June, to bring it back, as people have requested? Can I make a motion so that it gets on the agenda for June? I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion.
If that's perfectly appropriate.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that, in, at the next meeting in June, that we vote on the recommendation from the start, the start time ad hoc committee.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. So the motion now before you is to effectively do what we just did a month from now. So is there any discussion about that motion?
Yes, I would like to encourage school committee members who voted no tonight, whatever questions and concerns you have, to please try to get them addressed by next time so that we can vote, because if we're going to, if we are going to pass this, and I hope that we will, that we have as much planning time as possible for, for families and staff.
And I also would like to, to further that and state that if there are any questions that they're probably free to contact Lucy Hartree as the chair of the, or they can contact Howard or myself, or anyone else. So answer the questions prior to June, if there's anything that they can't get answered by themselves.
Okay.
Thank you.
So all those in favor of the current motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that motion carries, and the, this item will return at your next meeting in June. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the district improvement plan 2013, 2015. I will turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you. This is the district improvement plan, the final draft, that I talked to you about and proposed to you in January. This plan was, is developed by the administrative leadership team, and confirms the core values, how we build our goals and build our budget, has our mission, our theory of action, and it's similar to the format from last year. This year's plan has three strands. First strand, dedicated to students, second to faculty and staff, and third to technology. I'll briefly describe it for the people at home, but I'll have this posted on our website so everybody can see it. And I know that you have all seen this, and we went through it back in January. So under students, our plan to support students' learning through instruction includes meeting students' social and emotional needs, using research evidence-based options for redesigning elementary classroom schedules, to promote family engagement district-wide, to use a predictive model in order to identify students at risk for academic difficulty, and then to support their learning, and also to use differentiated instruction to provide lessons in the common core. In faculty and staff, we are looking to deepen and refine our focus on quality teaching. This includes creating a two-year calendar of professional development, having all teachers and ESPs trained and engaged in the professional learning community model, to have a structure in place for the pre-K-12 curriculum alignment, to be in compliance with the DESE requirements, training staff to work with English language learners, to continue to value the respect for human differences as a district, and apply that to student learning, and have that reflected in teaching practices, and to use our data teams to inform instruction on individual students, not just classroom or grade-level students, but to really focus down on the individual, and also to develop benchmark assessments, which are nearly finished. That's for September 2014. And then our third strand on technology, to embed instructional technology into our everyday practice, our three goals are to continue our teacher-led professional development sessions, which focus on small group learning in each building, to fully prepare to implement the PARC testing, which is something that we began, thanks to the capital planning money that was given to us to prepare the infrastructure, and also we'll have to train the teachers and train the students on how to take that test online, and finally, to have a committee of teachers to develop a plan to align student learning objectives with state technology and skill frameworks. So with this district improvement plan, I'm hoping that you'll vote approval. I think it's important to note that though I lead and facilitate the development of this plan, this is in no way my plan. This is our plan. This is a plan developed by the principals, by the administrators that are on our team, and we put a lot of time and energy into developing this. This is the first step in our district improvement and school improvement process. So after we finish this, and we talked about it in January, the principals went to work with their school councils to develop their school improvement plans, which takes this and implements it one step further. So I would ask for you to vote approval of this two-year plan tonight.
Move approval of the district improvement plan as presented.
Second.
Okay. So there's been a motion made and seconded on the district improvement plan. Are there any questions or comments about the plan that's been put before us?
I'd just like to comment that I'm, I'm still, having been on here long enough before we had a plan that looked like this, I'm still really appreciating how thorough and detailed and time-specific this all is, so that when a new superintendent comes in, that there is a clear plan with, with timelines to follow, and it just, it, it gives me hope that things can be a little bit more seamless than in previous transitions, where people are kind of starting from scratch. I just, I just, without acknowledging the specifics of what's in here, I just, I want to acknowledge kind of the big picture of what that means for the district to have such a thorough plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just echo and just pick set, and take it one step farther to cite, I won't cite the specifics, but talk about how it's very measurable by looking at percentage increases, and it really gives a target for movement forward, that's something that we're capable, it's very measurable and not vague at all. Thank you for all your hard work, and everybody's hard work putting this together.
Okay. Any other comments or questions before we take a vote on this? Okay, all those in favor then of approving the district improvement plan for 2013 through 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so the plan is approved, and now we'll move on to the school improvement plan presentations. And I believe the first is Margie Ryan, Principal.
Margie Riddle.
Margie Riddle, sorry, Margie Ryan. It's late. I apologize.
I'll take either one of those Rs.
We're renaming you after the school.
Sounds great.
Yes. Principal Riddle, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm, you've received, I believe, by email, copies of the, our report of our plan that was, that went for this past year, and also the plan that we, that we're proposing for the next two years, correct? And you've also got copies in front of you. I just want to start by acknowledging that one of the greatest pleasures, I think, of being a school principal is working in the school council. And the school council at Ryan Road School is incredible. They're so much fun to work with, they've got wonderful ideas, they ask fabulous questions, they really keep us all at the school on our toes. And just to acknowledge that they are, parents, Jason Berg, Mary Curtin, Tom Davidson, and Rob McLaughlin, and staff members, Michelle Andrews, Barbara Dillman, Greg Kerstetter, Diana Ramsden, and me. And Lisa Minnick keeps in really close touch with us by email and gives us wonderful suggestions. So you see the plan, and I'm sure that you can understand it as written. Basically, we have, we're proposing three goals, which are similar to the goals that we've had before, because we thought they were important ones, and we didn't feel like we had completely finished our work. The first one involves implementing the new Massachusetts 2011 frameworks in English Language Arts and Math, and using our new teacher evaluation system to make sure that that's being put in place. I can tell you that I feel the school is well on its way to implementing the new teacher evaluation plan. 100% of the staff, we were required to have 50% of the staff, the teachers, professional staff involved, and 100% are involved. And so I feel like we're working our way through the system. I'm having my end-of-year conferences with the teachers right now. They're presenting their artifacts and their portfolios to me, and we're all finding it to be a really enjoyable, interesting learning process. So I think that part of it is pretty well established. We don't feel that we've got the new curriculum frameworks totally in place, better in math than in English Language Arts. Math, we feel pretty confident about. English Language Arts, still needs some work. The second goal has to do with differentiation, essentially putting the practices in place that ensure that we are meeting the needs of all of our students through inclusion of special education and our Title I services in the classroom, through implementing the SST, the Student Support Team process, through tiered instruction, through academic choice, and those different ways of approaching differentiation, but starting, of course, with fidelity to the curriculum frameworks in classroom instruction for everybody. We're still working on those things. A lot of them are the same as they've been before. We feel like we're making really good progress. We made references to the parts of the district improvement plan that apply to the things that we're working on. And it's interesting that our third goal, every time our staff looks at this or our school council looks at it, they say, now that's the one that's really describing our school. That's really our school. So number three is about creating a welcoming and inclusive learning community for all our students and their families. And we're talking about healthy eating, healthy lifestyles, making sure that all of our families feel included through regular events, at least once a month, that honor the cultures of our families, making sure that our kids participate in community service. And of course, the thing that is really important to us, and that is furthering our understanding of responsive classroom. We think responsive classroom is an incredibly positive, community-building aspect of our school, but what we've learned about it is, you don't just learn it and then do it. You have to keep going deeper, going deeper, going deeper. And it's interesting that around this time of the year, each year, I start hearing around the school, well, next year, this is the part that we have to look at. So for instance, we've developed support systems for our substitute teachers, who we call guest teachers, when they come into the building, so they'll know exactly how to interact with the students. That's one thing we've done. We've worked with parents. We've brought our ESPs, our support staff, together with teachers to deepen their understanding of responsive classroom. It goes on and on. So that's a really important part of this. And that's my five minutes. So now, if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there questions about the Ryan Road School Improvement Plan?
I wanted to say thank you very much, and it's with a heavy heart that I acknowledge that this will be the last one you'll deliver to us this year. I'm sure there'll be time to thank you for your many years of service at Ryan Road.
Thanks.
And in the district.
Thank you. And I should also say that we did prepare a two-year plan, with the understanding that Sarah Madden will be joining the school as the new principal, starting July 1st, and of course, it would be my understanding, and I'm sure yours as well, that she would take that plan and adjust it as, as seems fit as time goes by, but at least that gives her a framework to start with, so she has something rather than nothing. Okay?
Thank you, Margie. Thank you, Principal Riddle. Next up is Principal Joseph Smith from Leeds Elementary.
Good evening, school committee members. Thank you for this opportunity, for allowing me to share my Leeds School Improvement Plan. It's been a long night. Let's talk about sleep. Made me sleepy, so I hope I can stay awake. I assume that you had an opportunity to look at the document, look it over. So there's a few things I want to point out to you before we get into it. The first thing is that the theory of action is the same as the one in 2011 to 2012 School Improvement Plan. The second thing to notice is that the percentage of students in Goal One has been adjusted to reflect the performance in students based on the last MCAS exam. Also, the third thing is that, if you notice, there are outcomes and there are preparations for success in the document. The outcomes represent initiatives or actions that already have been taking place, and the preparations for success are things to come for school year 2013 to 2014. And finally, while these are four goals that will address the school year 13 SIP, there has been a number of initiatives that target improvement, improving student performance, and that will continue, such as the Smith College AIMS Program Collaboration will continue with the chemistry students, with the Leeds K-5 students and teachers, and that will run through 2015. Also, the Hitchcock Center will continue their nature's hand-on science program from 2013 to 2015. Teachers will receive embedded professional development on how to facilitate rigorous hands-on science inquiry. Also, the Leeds AM Tutoring Program will have before-school bus service, so they'll have AM bus service to support the students of low-income, the medical department, so they can get there and be participatory, because that's the demographic that's missing in the AM tutoring program. So I want to make sure that that is solidified before I leave. Teachers will continue to collaborate using the peer observation model to improve their practice, and finally, the Leeds School Council will continue to discuss the implementation of a pilot program for departmentalization. And with that being said, the Leeds School Improvement Plan, like I said, as you can see, it has outcomes, and it has preparation for success. The first goal, the percentage of students in grades three to five scoring on proficiency higher in math will increase from 48% to 75%, as measured by the MCAS administered in March 2013. And I'm not going to read through all of the outcomes, the things that we have practiced, not to put you to sleep, but it's there. And the preparations for success will be, 100% of the classroom teachers in grades two to five will share sample MCAS open response results to students, illustrating the use of rubrics and student exemplars. Also, 100% of the special ed teachers, Title I teachers and classroom teachers will create math walls and math rubrics for their students to reference in the classrooms. If you move on to Goal Number Two, this pertains to the non-professional teachers, and we had this goal as a goal last year, but I felt like I wanted to, we felt like we needed to continue it. And so we expanded a little bit on it, and what we're going to do is have non-professional teachers be mentored by the math coaches at Leeds. And we have three of them taught underneath Margie's tutelage, and they'll be working with all the non-professional staff to make sure that they have a deepened understanding of the math curriculum. And some of the preparations for success will be, over the course of two years, 2012, 2014, non-professional teachers will meet a minimum of, minimum of twice a year, excuse me, twice per month, for individual supervisory meetings with the principal to discuss the professional growth plans and their evaluation plans. Also, during the summer of 2013, 100% of the Leeds Elementary School teachers will be offered mathematics professional development, the DMI, developing mathematical. The DMI, Developing Mathematical Ideas, will be offered to all teachers at no cost, and that will be coming through the Clark School funds. Goal Three is about our technology, and I'm very proud to say that the family stakeholders in the Leeds community have been very aggressively supporting the Leeds community with professional development. So I have a number of businessmen and businesswomen who have been participatory in presenting their expertise with how to use smart boards, how to use document cameras, and so forth. I've also had the pleasure of having Angelo be part of that process. And as a result, if you look at Outcomes B, the percentage of faculty who use technology in practice will increase from seventy to eighty percent as measured by signup as a media specialist and teacher survey has happened. So we have met that criteria, that goal. Also, so there's no preparation for success, because we felt like that goal hasn't been met, essentially. And one thing I might add that hasn't been mentioned, all of the classrooms have whiteboards, and they will have document cameras by the end of the summer. And finally, it was the Leeds School Council that decided that we need to have a goal that addressed the students' social-emotional needs. So as a result, we created a master schedule that supports teachers to implement morning meetings. We also each month have Leeds School Community Meetings where we have Clark School, other parents come in and be participatory with our meetings. And we also are going to hire an interventionist to support the students who are struggling with social-emotional behaviors. And my goal is to send one hundred percent of all the teachers to responsive classroom training. Last year, I sent ten, and so far, I have four that signed up. But there's also competition to go to the DMI training, so parents do want to, excuse me, teachers do want to try and organize their summers effectively and not be in school too much. So that is my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll take those.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Principal Smith about the Leeds School Improvement Plan?
I just have one question. You stated that the goal was already met.
Technology.
Right. So it's not looking at what's going to be met, that part of it was what already happened?
If you look at the outcomes for Goal Number Three, there are one, two, three, four, five things, significant things that has happened. One of those things is we have Study Island, which is a web-based software where teachers and students can access from home to help increase their mathematical and their ELA capacity. So there's a lot of things that we have done. I felt like that goal has been met, and I really want to turn my attention to the other three goals, especially the social-emotional goal.
Well, I understand, and I think that that's very admirable, and I think that's wonderful, especially with looking into responsive classroom and hopefully getting, I've seen how it works wonderfully out at Ryan Road and at home. I mean, it's just a nice, respectful way to treat kids. I just, and it's just me, School Improvement Plan, I was thinking of things that we were looking ahead, so I was, was this a goal that you'd already had and that you met, and that's why we put it here, or?
Yes, that's correct. This goal started in 2011, actually.
Okay, great.
When we had just one smart board, so.
That's pretty good. Thank you.
Before you got into this plan, you talked about one of the focus for the coming year was about departmentalization.
Yes.
Can you say more about what that meant?
What I meant by departmentalization, or the pilot, or both?
Yes.
Both?
Yeah.
So departmentalization refers to the systematic expertise of one teacher teaching one core subject area versus teaching a slew of subjects. So me, as a classroom teacher, has the arduous task of having to teach ELA, math, science, yada, 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 yada. Given, first of all, it's a very antiquated model in my estimation, and in my humble estimation. When I looked at other schools, like the Nora School, Redding, in the eastern part of the state, and other schools I visited, I noticed that high-performance schools have this model where teachers specialize in core subjects. It's less tedious on the teacher. They become an expert in a particular core subject. And so something that I thought we might want to explore, given the woes of most districts in terms of budgetary lacking or funding, it might be a good thing to know that I can't send a good teacher to get math training, science training, social studies training. But if I can get a teacher that specializes in one particular area at a grade level, I think that those students will benefit immensely. So we want to pilot that and see if that's true. I know it's true in other schools.
So I know when my kids went through Leeds, that was a while ago, so I know that in the fifth grade in particular, the teachers were doing that. They would have their, all the kids would go to one teacher for science and one for math and one for history, I think it was, and they all did language arts. So are you talking about looking at that school-wide, across all the grades?
Well, what I'm looking at doing is a pilot, well, I won't be here. Well, what I'm hoping will happen, my hope is that there'll be at least a pilot to investigate the efficacy in this model. Because like I said, one teacher doing all core subjects and being very knowledgeable or an expert in all those subjects is pretty, it's a big demand on teachers, I think. And so, in all fairness to them, I think that teachers will be better if they're teaching something that they're passionate about. I know that me, as a special ed teacher and as a reading teacher, I was very passionate about reading. So, science, I cared about a lot, math, yeah, but I really loved reading. So that's my passion. And I think that my students benefited immensely from my reading expertise.
Just to kind of jump in, because I taught in a classroom like that. I taught just math and science and social studies, and I shared a class with another one, we did ELA, and we found it just extraordinarily helpful. In terms of planning time, I was able to refine lessons because I was teaching double everything I was doing. I had another partner to bounce ideas off about students, so we had concerns about a particular student. We could talk and have dialogue about that. There were so many benefits. Some of the drawbacks were parent-teacher conferences, because we had forty instead of twenty. But for me and for my colleague, it was a really powerful experience, and it was something that, had I stayed in the classroom, I would have maintained that as a way. It doesn't work for everyone. I mean, there's things that people have to finesse because it is, it's a partnership, but it's something that I think a pilot seemed very interesting to explore, and it could be beneficial.
When I went to elementary school here, I went to Florence Grammar School, but we had that. We had, so somehow it shifted back away from that, because we had that. We had science teacher, and we moved around during the day in fifth grade.
Yes, Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I just had a question. How does this, how does this work with the idea of integrating a curriculum where you're teaching multiple subjects at once? Is that taken into account?
Integration doesn't go anywhere. Integration is naturally there. It's just a matter of being aware of it. So you can't have math without having science, because math is a science, for instance. And you can't study reading without having math or science embedded in it. It's just natural that it's there, just a matter of highlighting that. So it doesn't, no, it doesn't interfere with integration at all. And technology is so much more integrated at this point now, when you have departmentalization. You can do more with the technology, I think. So when we went to go visit the Nora School, for instance, my teachers were blown away with it. They loved it. And so I just think that they need some leadership that's going to carry them in that direction.
I may add, and there are variations of this going on in our district right now. It's a strategy we put in place at Bridge Street in the fourth grade, and at Jackson Street, they have what's called mix-it-up math, so that the kids go to a different teacher, and, you know, it's something that is a positive trend in education. And of course, anytime there's a pilot, you look at your current data, you have your baseline data, and you look at it and make sure that what you're doing is improving instruction, improving student learning. So I think a pilot gives us an opportunity to do just that, which builds on the data teams that we've established in our schools.
Are there any other questions or comments for?
Well, just the fact that somewhere it disappeared, because, I mean, I did that years ago. So at some point, they changed it and took it out.
That's education.
Yeah.
Back and forth, that's how.
Pendulum back.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Principal Smith. We appreciate the report. Thank you. Okay, the next presentation is Principal Athas and the NHS School Improvement Plan.
Good evening. Just wanted to open up with, I don't know if Brian said anything about it, but we had the School Day Olympics at NHS today, and it was a great day. We had a variety of school districts that came, and it really was heartwarming and heartfelt. And I know he's probably not watching, but A.J. Strack won the show. He sang a version of the National Anthem that was, it was like an angel. So it was great. A lot of our students volunteered, and staff volunteered, so it was a good day had by all. So my district's school improvement plan focuses in on the achievement, closing the achievement gap, technology, and the further development of our advisor-advisy program. So what I would like to do is go over the successes that we had this year and where I think that we can use some work. So one of my goals, which I knew was lofty, was I said that one hundred percent of the sophomore class will participate in PSAT testing in 2012 and 2013. The PSA test is a direct link indicator of SAT scores and also college readiness, and also it identifies students who otherwise wouldn't take an AP class, that they have the potential to do it. So what happens is all of the sophomores, I want to take it, this year, a hundred and ninety tested out of two hundred and eighteen, which was about eighty-eight percent. What happens after that is guidance counselors meet with these students and go over the results. And the college board gives each student a booklet that looks like this, "Reach Your College Goals." And in the booklet, you can see correct answers and explanations, get a personalized SAT study plan, search for colleges, explore majors and careers, learn about scholarship programs, and take a personality test. And when the student opens it up, it shows where your skill area is, your strengths and your weaknesses. It also shows you the correct answers to the test. So it's a lot of information in the assessment. So we'd like to continue to do that. And again, I don't even think for next year I would change the hundred percent, because I think that's, although a lofty goal, it's, it could be doable. My two percent increase in student attendance from ninety-five percent to ninety-seven percent, I really won't be able to comment on that until the end of the year, reports are in from the state. Again, ninety-five is a state average. I looked at it for next year, and I put in ninety-six, because as you get up that high with percentage-wise with attendance, it's very difficult to move to the next level. And the third was to increase the number of students entering the ninth grade in honors English classes from sixty-nine percent to seventy-two percent in order to improve student achievement. As you know, we worked with the middle school collaboratively this year in the math area. And then I'm happy to report, as you know, I believe, that Ms. Wilson came and gave an update on the math at the middle school. And so we modeled off of that, and we had our English department come together. And English is one of the only courses, except if you take an algebra or geometry, where there's leveling. And so there's a standard English and there's an honors English one. So our English teachers got together and worked on it. And this year, we're going to model after our history class, modern history, and we're going to have the honors included with the standard English. And they're excited about it. They've been working on curriculum. They're aligning it with the common core, and I think it will be a very positive thing. To date, our students have signed up for classes. There's a hundred and thirty-three in honors English and ninety in standard English, and they will be smaller groups, smaller class sizes, but they will be heterogeneously grouped. The honors students will be offered other assignments to get the honors credit for the class. English and sophomore, you remain standard and honors English separately as they move into the AP areas. In the technology area, before I leave that, I just want to say two things. In math, we are modeling after middle school. We are coming over to the middle school to give eighth graders tests to see if some of them can test out of 1A at our high school. And Lisa, we're starting a capstone project for seniors, second semester, senior year, and it's going to be community service-oriented, so it's going to have your name on it.
True.
So in the technology area, and I want to just say, as Joseph said, and I know Angelo, you're sitting here, it's been a pleasure to work with Angelo. You have no idea how far we've come this year. It's been awesome. And even, I mean, Google Chrome, as simple as that is, I have to tell you. So anyway, so looking at the technology, one hundred percent of the faculty using the same grading system. And as you know, this year, my teachers all used N-grade, or most of them used N-grade. And I think that if, as parents on the committee, you know that you can track what they're doing, what they owe, and believe it or not, the kids are awesome about it. They really, they look to see what they owe. It's good for the teachers, learning strategies, if students have work to do, the teachers just can go right on and pick, you know, so it saves so much time. I won't be here to see it, but I can imagine, I've worked with Power School with a new information system, what the capabilities are going to be. So we have been giving our staff professional development days. Gabby Harrington has been offering some professional development. Angelo's offered a lot of professional development. What I like about it is it's not just put in, it's followed, there's follow-through with it, and there's explanations. And I was in the computer lab the other day doing a walkthrough, and one of the teachers said, "Look at this." And we've been trying for a long time to get insight onto the computers in the lab where the teachers can watch what the kids are doing and, you know, like write messages, like go back to your assignment, et cetera. And it's on, it's in the computer lab, so we're excited about that. The PTO, I can't say enough about them. They have been, along with the district, our technology base. They raise money every school year, they donate money, and we put it right into technology. This year, we brought document cameras. Most all teachers have the LCD projectors mounted. We try to do a little bit every year. There's MIMO's also and smart boards. Increasing the number of online and credit recovery classes, we are very successful with that. We bought into a program called Education 2020, and believe it or not, it's already changed its name, and I don't know what it is. So we are offering five courses this semester. We have fourteen students that are signed up for them. They're marketing, MCAS math, human geography, communications, biology. And I'm looking into summer school to see if we can get some mini-courses for kids to take over the summer. They really seem to like it, and they like the pace where they don't have to, you know, there's not a teacher standing in front of them. They can do it at their own pace, and it's also very good for the credit recovery. And engaging eighty-five percent of the students in classroom technology instruction, that is a work in progress, and the way that I can measure that is through walkthroughs and teacher evaluation. And this year, we are going to offer two computer science classes, and it really is, it speaks to a need at the high school, they both filled up immediately. And another computer design class that we're offering filled up immediately, so we're excited about that. Let's see. We also have AP US History online. One student wasn't able to get into AP US History last year because of scheduling conflict, and he took AP US History. In number three, in our advisories, the second year into the advisories, we did not do a pre-assessment, but at the end of this advisory season, we are going to do a post-assessment and ask the students if they feel more connected to the high school and find out some other things from the advisory. This year, the staff at NHS developed professional learning communities. We had a data community, an advisory planning community, tiered instruction, a homework, healthy living committee, professional development, and scheduling. And I bring them up because we also had a new student government leadership team, which was a direct result of NIAS, where kids wanted more of a voice. So they formed it this year, and they did an excellent job. And one of the things they studied was homework, and they collaborated with our advisory committee to talk about it in the professional learning community. So we're trying to interconnect all that we do to provide meaningful feedback. We continue to provide professional development to staff. What happened after the first year, we had a lot of professional development for staff in the advisories, and they asked that it could be voluntary for this coming year. So what Allison and Deb, who were the NEF grant, they received a big NEF grant, they came to our school on Wednesdays prior to the advisory on Friday, and they modeled for teachers that needed, that felt that they would like some help with it. The peer advisory, we did not do because it got to the end of the summer, and it was costly, and it was just going to be a yeoman's amount of work. So we decided that the end of this year, we would get a peer leader in each group and then go forward from there. We wanted to make sure that the advisory, seeing that it was a second year, in fact, we spent time on that and not on something else, and then the big piece would not materialize. we spent time on that and not on something else, and then the big piece would not materialize. And as far as the discipline piece, until we get to the end of the year, I won't know too much about that because we have to collect some data from the DESI site and also from our own records. We had a good year with advisories. We had, Setting the Tone was one of the advisories that's group norms. We showed a movie to the entire school, Girl Rising, which is a powerful documentary about nine girls born into poverty and highlights the power of education. And then we discussed it in the advisory that followed. Academic integrity is always a big one. We were fortunate with the presidential election, we were able to have meaningful discussion about that. And so all in all, it was a good year for the advisories. I agree with Margie and Joseph that my predecessor will, or successor, will develop a plan for next year. I did make some changes that I will share with whoever that is. And so, do you have any questions? I hope I didn't rush, but I know it's late and you're...
Any questions for Principal Adams?
Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say to you and publicly, thank you. I've had a wonderful experience in Northampton, and I probably won't be at school committee anymore, but it's been a pleasure to work with all of you, and you have a great school system. And I love Northampton High School. The fact, I always say you can be who you want to be, and the kids that you have in there and the staff, it's just, it's incredible, and the community support is even better. So thank you.
Thank you.
We thank you and Mr. Smith for all that you've done for Northampton Public Schools.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, principals. Please go home and get some sleep.
Okay, next up, we have a presentation, NPS Technology Plan, Angelo Rota.
Hopefully you all have a copy of this in front of you in color, because there are some charts that I'll refer to that will be much more applicable to what I'll be talking about, if you can see them in different colors. First off, this document is brand-new. I looked at the old technology plan. I had all of my technology integration specialists look at what we had. Gabrielle, Richard Harrington, who's at the high school, Molly McLaughlin, who's at the middle school, Andrea Marks, who's at the elementary school, and John Cressitelli, who you know is a computer teacher at the middle school. And the one word that came out was verbiage. There was an awful lot of it. So our goal was to condense, make it very easy to read, make it understandable, show where we are, where we're going, what we hope to accomplish. And you'll notice across each page, living document. Because as you know, especially in technology, it's changing so rapidly that you can't just say, "Okay, we've got the tech plan done," and you put it on a shelf and you don't have to worry about it. So this is an ongoing process that we're revisiting monthly as we change this. And again, a great impetus for this is because we have to file it with DESI and also to validate our E-Rate plan, so that we're eligible for E-Rate funding. So you have to have a, preferably a living document and something on file with the Department of Education, so that you can also fulfill your E-Rate requirements. The first part, just a little background on the Northampton community, and the old one was very intense. It had a lot of information in there. I kind of cut it down to just give an overview, definition of terms, what is technology? Technology can be a pen. I mean, anything that works as a tool for you can be technology. It could be a smartboard, but it also could be just a pen. This evening, Superintendent Salzer spoke about the district improvement goals. Since this plan goes from 2013 to 2015, which is according to DESI regulation, that your tech plan goes for a period of three years. I included the district improvement goals from 2012 to 2013, which are already accomplished in most part. And you can see in the left column on the third page what the goals were and how we fared. How did we do? Did we meet those goals? Where did we fall short? Why did we fall short? How did we do well on them? And then, as was presented just a little while ago, the district improvement plan for 2013 and 2014. So that's the next section. What are the goals and how we need to fare? What do we need to do? What do we need to continue doing well? Where have we fallen short, and we've got to make up some ground there? And so we've looked at where we've been, again, where we are now, and looking forward to the next year. At the bottom of the fourth page, not only do we need to fare and what do we need to do, but we have to be clear about outcomes. What do we want to accomplish and how do we plan on accomplishing them? How do we collaborate? This is a collaborative effort. We meet again regularly so that we discuss where we are, where we're going, what are the needs at the different schools. And monitoring and measuring performance, because again, that came up earlier. How do you know your program's doing well? How do you validate it? Well, you have to look at where you were and what's going on now, and are you seeing any tangible results? And then finally, we have to become accountable for progress and results every step of the way. So it's nice that People's Bank comes in and donates $5,000 to us, so we can use that for technology, but who's going to get it and why are they going to get it? You know, in my experience, I've worked with teachers who say, "Well, I want a smartboard, it'll make my job easier." Well, it doesn't. It makes it more demanding, because you have to become much more creative, much more in tune with technology and current trends and instruction. So these are important things. We have to become accountable, and it's nice to get equipment, it's nice to get donations, but who's going to use it? What's their reason for being? Why do they want to use it? And I need that justification from staff to say, "I want a projector." Well, what do you want to do with it? Well, I want to be able to show multimedia. I want to be able to use a document camera to show kids work. Why is this a four on MCAS? Why is this a good composition? Well, because look at what they did. They don't have to run down the hall, they don't have to make copies, they don't have to make overhead transparencies. There's immediate results. And so these are important things that change your instruction and validate why we're getting the money, so we can go to these businesses, as Brian and I have done this year, and be able to show not only the tool, but show how well our students in Northampton do. And it's very, very impressive to businesses to say, "We didn't, we had no idea that students were doing this kind of work and performing at this level." And so that was a great incentive to them to say, "We're not just giving money, we know it's going to be used wisely, we know technology is growing ahead." So that's been very helpful. The next section of the document focuses on levels of progress. And there are, the legend is that if it's green, we're at an acceptable level. If it's yellow, it needs improvement. And if it's red, we're underperforming. And again, we all sat down, we all looked at this, and we were very honest. We didn't try to cover up anything and say, "Oh yeah, we're doing really great and everything's wonderful." We looked at things, for instance, on the first row of that table, focus area, impact of technology on the teacher role, mostly teacher-centered lectures, minimal student use of technology and instruction. Unfortunately, that's the most common thing we have in our district. That's not to say that our instruction is poor. It's not. Instruction is excellent. But as far as looking at it from a technological point of view and how technology is used, we could improve that a great deal. Okay? So we looked at these things, not to be critical that we're not doing great things in the classroom, because obviously we look at our school results and our SAT scores and our AP exam results, and we know we're doing a great job, but how is technology fitting into that? How are we moving forward into the 21st century? As Andrea Marks always makes me laugh, she says, "Before it's over." So we want to get there before it's over. So that's, you know, what our focus is. And so I went through this, as you can see, using this rubric. Is it early technology, meaning is it just beginning? Are we just finding our way into developing technology? We're making good use of it. We can see we're moving ahead into proficient technology, which is what standards and best practices are all about. And then into advanced technology, where you've got those people who are really way out on the cutting edge. If you go into some of the chemistry classes at Northampton High School, the technology, they've got an Apple TV on the wall, they've got an iPad, they're doing experiments, they're interacting, they're doing things on the web. I mean, they're at that cutting edge, they're way out there. They even have a program where the kids do the bubble sheets and they hold it up to the computer, and the camera built into the computer grades the paper right there, so the kids can see their results. They don't even have to go to the scantron. It's beyond them. And it's all web-based, so it's fantastic stuff. So again, I went through the table, I looked at things. And then as we get down to staff, technology integration specialist, we're proficient there. Budget levels, I'm happy to say that our budget's been very stable. And it's been stable, thank you to Superintendent Salzer for this year and looking forward to next year, that we didn't sustain cuts. And we were able to get help from the city, thanks to the mayor and the city council, to get $100,000 in capital improvement, which we're going to use for beefing up the infrastructure, getting new switches. And that leads, again, to the need for park testing, which will be all online hopefully in 2014, we'll see. But we need to have that infrastructure in order to build our wireless network on top of that, and then add Chromebooks, iPads, notebooks, things of that nature. Universal design and accessible technology, very important, special needs students, that's developing, it's there in certain areas, at certain levels, but we have a ways to go. But it's new at this point, and we're hoping to bring more and more in. Our internet and WAN access, we've done a lot of things this year to change how we connect to the internet. We've brought in new kinds of servers and proxy servers, and we've beefed up our internet connections. We had residential modems in each of the schools, which is what you have in your house. So think of a modem that you have in your house for Comcast internet is running a whole school. You can see the load that would be put on it. So at the high school, we went to business class. At JFK, we're now in business class speeds, and we'll put business class speed in all the elementary schools next year through our E-Rate plan. So they're all 100 meg. So you're looking at very high-speed, corporate-level internet access. And we're looking at 99% uptime, because we need that. Now we're in Google Apps for Education, everything's going to the web, we've got to be online all the time. It's critical that we're online now. We can't afford to go down, you know, maybe for an hour or something, but for two or three days, we just can't do it now. We're too dependent. And then the last section, the action plan. The action plan is a compilation of the different things that we're looking at. Who's the owner, 2013, 14, and 2014, 2015? Those are the last two pages, last three pages. What we're doing is, we're meeting again on a regular basis and we're fleshing this out. All of this information is available on the NPS website, on the technology page, Tech Plan. And the Tech Plan is always very dependent, not only on the people in the school, but the people in the community. So I would recommend, if anyone out there is looking on the web, looking on our website, please look at our Tech Plan. If you have comments, concerns, questions, please let us know, because it has to be a community effort. That's the way E-Rate and the Department of Ed looks at it. And so we want to be responsive to those questions that come out of the community. And so we'll be filling that in. There are objectives, which are fleshed out on the second to the last page. Our infrastructure, which is, will be upgraded with $100,000 from the capital improvement. Wireless in all school buildings, if we get the next level of funding, and then laptops, Chromebooks, iPads, tablets, and so on. Bring-your-own-device is popular. A lot of teachers feel they don't want to bring their own device, because they have concerns that if it breaks in the school, who's responsible? And so there is a concern on their part. I think once we get wireless in the schools, you'll see more students bringing their devices, whether it be an iPad, a laptop, whatever, because then they'll know they can use it. One thing we did do in the schools this year, there is wireless in every school library. So if you go into the high school library, JFK library, any elementary school library, wireless is there. So for the iPads that we do have, the laptop carts that we do have, teachers can bring their students not only to the library, but also use the wireless carts. So we're expanding a little bit of wireless, just to get people into it, but we can't afford on our own to put wireless throughout the buildings. It would just be prohibitive at this point for just our budget. Website has been upgraded in a number of schools. It will continue, I'll be redoing the whole website. It should be done by August. And I'll save the district site for last. So all the individual schools, if you've seen High School, JFK, Bridge, Jackson Street, they're all being revamped and turned over to a new format. And that's basically it. Would you have any questions?
I just love it when he talks.
Yeah, just a comment. I could say, so many of us on the committee, for a long time, those long-term employees like us, and I'm sure the newbies, this has been a real issue for us. We've always wanted to see a vision for technology, but not just a vision, but actually see it achieved. And I can say, for the first time in a very long time, not only do we see a really thorough, clear vision that includes the wants and the needs of all the people, the stakeholders in the system, but we're seeing targets hit, and we're seeing support from the city and from the administration to make this happen, and financial support and just moral support, everything that's needed with this. And it's a huge game changer in education. You're right, it doesn't make your job easier. Technology is, it makes your job different, but I think in some ways it makes your, in many ways, it makes your job better, because it's exciting, and it's exciting for students, and it's exciting for teachers. And the more teachers are excited, the more students are excited. And I, I'm just, I'm amused that we're excited again, but I'm very excited about what's happening with technology. And a lot of it goes to your credit, so thank you.
Mr. Meyer?
When I first arrived on the school committee, I went to look for the technology plan. And I knew it, I knew the updated, there was an old one on the website, but I knew the new one had to be there, because it was state law requiring that the new one be there. And then I found out that there was in fact, no new plan. So thank you for an excellent plan, extraordinarily clearly laid out. Thank you for your energy and skill that has been clear throughout the district this year. I needed a tech question answered at 8:30 on a Friday night, and so I pulled out my phone and sent the email off to Angelo. And I had a sneaking suspicion, I was hoping this wasn't going to happen, but of course, he had his smartphone and answered me about seven minutes later. So again, you know, it's just that level of commitment is infectious, and I think it's really going to help the district move forward.
I'd like to reiterate what both Mike and Downey said, but I'd also like to say, thank you very much for going out with, and getting the donations from the community. I think that's wonderful, and applaud both of your efforts, Brian and Angelo. Thank you very much. And thank, it's a wonderful report, very inclusive.
I'll go ahead and I'll save everybody. Angelo and I could probably talk acronyms for about an hour. There is one question I had, though, it is acronym-related. The Mass Broadband Initiative, the MBI, is that going to affect any of your planning, do you know, down the road? Is that going to be close enough?
And because of E-Rate, what we pay, if you were to get, for instance, if you went to Comcast and you say, "I want business class, 100 meg," it would cost you $399 a month. Because we'll be on E-Rate, we get what they call a national account, which brings it to 125, and then we get 53% off that. Mass broadband is 400 a month per school, and that's just for the broadband, then you have to pay the carrying charges to get it there. So we're not seeing how that's going to be a savings at this point.
Same on the city, we're in the same, we're going to stick with what we have, because it's not, there's not a savings for us either, but it's there.
I think that'll change, but...
It may change, yeah.
I just wanted to say how much fun it is to hear a report from somebody who clearly has passion for what they do for work.
has passion for what they do for work. It really, I mean, it's just, yeah. It's really, it's really wonderful, so ditto to what everybody said, and a special public thank you for the good riddance to group wise.
Although, don't you ever go away when you're making that change?
That was the smartest thing you ever did.
Or anything like that. I drove Tracy crazy while you were gone trying to figure it out.
Thank you for changing my phone number to the correct one, I've now received phone calls for the first time in a year and a half.
Not in another year.
Angelo, thank you, excellent plan.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the.
You both go home, we'll get some sleep now.
The next item on the agenda is a report of the Rules and Policy Subcommittee. Speaking of people who love their work.
I actually, until I saw the agenda, I wasn't aware that this was going to be discussed this evening. It was brought to the Rules and Policy Committee a few, a couple of months ago, but then there was kind of a delay in crafting the language and getting it to us, and so I hadn't really paid attention that it was coming to us. And I do have some concerns, there are, there are a few changes that are highlighted in the document, and the rationale is sort of listed off to the side in a track changes thing. But if we actually do change our transportation as it was proposed, this policy is incorrect and needs additional changes. It says in there that bus passes will be issued for K-12. And it says that secondary students in grade seven through 12 will have to purchase, so there are a number of items in here that need to be revised if the changes to transportation stick. If it's reinstated, then we just need to look at them and determine if they're correct, the way they are.
Reinstated, it'll be correct, if it's not, then you're right, we'll have to change it. I didn't think of that.
Sorry, so.
I had a couple of things also that I thought should be addressed in here that weren't, you know. One has to do with the Code of Conduct reference, the bus discipline thing, compare it to the Code of Conduct in the student handbooks, and there are some discrepancies. So it would be really good.
Could you tell me a section?
The student handbooks has bus, has a section for bus violations, but the penalties are different than the ones in this policy. So that would need to be aligned, I can tell you which.
Can you tell me where?
Would be chosen, but it would need to be aligned. And likewise, and then some other things that aren't addressed that are in our Code of Conduct, so it's just bullying policy, which is not mentioned in the transportation policy. So whether we just simply want to eliminate that and just refer to the Code of Conduct, which might not entirely cover it though, because a lot of the Code of Conduct doesn't deal with a penalty including not being allowed to ride on the bus, because the Code of Conduct is mostly focused on school, and so its penalties involve participation in, at the school building, as opposed to on the bus. So there's a certain amount of work to be done between that and the whole Code of Conduct part. Also, there were some curious differences in the numbers. In Section D of our bus policy here, we listed in terms of capacities of buses, D7, I think, it said that our capacity was 60 on a 71, but in another section it said our capacity was 51 on a 77. So in other words, there's just some numbers that are just not in sync within the policy itself, like from one section to the next.
Actually, those were just updated by Joy Winnie to match the state, the complaint.
Right, but then there was down in another section, there's another set that's got the 60.
So not in Section 6?
So it just didn't get carried forward?
No, in Section D7. It just, there was one that was 60 on a 71, as opposed to the 51 on a 77. It just, it's just confusing numbers, in other words.
All right, I'll ask her to look at that again.
And then the final one, there's something that, I don't know what our bus policy was back when I, 10 years ago, but we used to be able to have our kids go home when we weren't going to be home, to meet them off the bus on an occasional basis, have them go, get off at a different stop at a friend's house, and be picked up by the friend's parent. And we could do that with a note. And I know, notice, I don't know whether the policy got changed to eliminate that option, or whether this policy was the one that was in existence and this was an off-the-books program, but it was incredibly helpful to us as parents to not, because when that policy did change a few years ago, it became very difficult. We had numbers of times when, you know, we were at work, and it was, and we, while normally we could arrange our schedule so that one of us could be there at 3:15 or 3:20, you know, sometimes it happens where that's not possible, and we could write a note, send it with our child, give it to the teacher, and our kid would get off at Lisa's house. And, you know, we made the phone calls and things, it wasn't a surprise, but it was really, really useful and tremendous service to us at, I think, no cost whatsoever to the district. And I would like to have that be included in this policy, I would like us to be able to do that.
The Transportation Director was pretty clear about not allowing any, I mean, there, we discussed, we discussed whether it's possible that you could go to after-school care three days a week and home the other two days a week, and we just, there, it's just, it's difficult to keep up with little children, and we have some liability concerns about making sure that people get where they're supposed to get. So I think from her perspective, it's easier to just say, "The rules are the rules and this is the one."
I understand that, but.
So I understand.
While we were doing this, the only time I heard about it was actually where a child got off at their, where they're supposed to get off, and there was nobody there to greet them. I never heard during, you know, my six years of being in that world, heard anybody say that their child had, I mean, because the reason this works is because you've contacted the other parent, and they've said, "Yes, I will meet your child."
Could we send this back to the Subcommittee or something, and have you discussed it with them?
I'm certainly hoping.
Certainly do.
So it sounds like you, this needs a little more.
I think it needs some, I think it needs some more work, and I think we need to determine whether we are actually changing the transportation services that we offer before we can, we may bring it back to you with changes to the rest of the language if we don't know about our transportation offerings for this year, but hopefully we can get that figured out and just bring you the whole thing revised in a couple of months.
So the agenda had said a first reading tonight, so obviously, would you like a?
It would have come back anyway next month, but I think, I don't know when we would schedule another Rules and Policy meeting, so I would say maybe not for June, but maybe it'll be back in July.
Okay, so.
I guess, I don't know, would that constitute then a first reading again, if we change it a lot?
Yeah, I don't think we've, yeah, I'm not sure if we could count tonight as a first reading, so, so we can bring it back in July. Do you require a vote to send it back to you, or are we just, we'll just continue this? Okay, fine. Okay, so now we will turn to, I believe the superintendent will be providing the Business Manager Report.
Well, our Business Manager is in a three-day course, continuing his work to get his procurement license, and so he has his exam in the morning, and I offered to give the report for him. So you have it in your packet, just a couple of the noteworthy items, that the FY14 budget was approved, and that with the mayor's proposal of a prop two-and-a-half override, the administrative team continues to draft our list of priorities, and as I said earlier, that should be complete by the end of next week, and we'll pass it on to the mayor, that should become public shortly after that. Also, I think it's important to note that the district has advertised and posted for the new bus contract, and you know this is a very big deal, so there'll be bid opening, it should all be complete by the end of the month. You may be wondering, what if we change the bus services? And so we have put the bid out as our budget is approved right now, because that's what we know for sure. And in the event that the override passes and we bring busing back to the high school, then we can do an addendum to the contract, but we certainly can't wait to do our bus bid until that happens. So I wanted you to know that. Another important highlight here is that the student information system, once again, yeah, Angelo, has been, he's bringing our new student information system, the AspenX2, to our school system. We had to go out to bid, and this was a big purchase once again, that the mayor and the city is helping us with, and with through capital planning, to be specific. And the Technology Department will be installing this new software, training the teachers and training, more importantly, the administrative assistants to help us do this. We decided to do it in the spring so that everybody's trained for September, rather than to put it in the summer and try to train people as the school year is starting. And so Angelo, I can't say enough about him, he takes on big projects, large initiatives, he seems to be tireless in his efforts, and continues to move us forward. The FY14 capital plan, you know, we went off, how do I say it, off timeline with the new charter. So what we did in the fall for capital planning, we now are doing again in the spring under the new charter for capital planning for next year. And again, we are, we have a request in for $200,000 for our technology so we can finish the implementation of what we need to do for park testing, and also $25,000 to help support the AspenX2, and we will wait to hear on that. That's it for the highlights of the Business Manager Report. You also have the printout in front of you of our current budget. I'll just lead you to the bottom line. As you can see, we are in May, we have two months, 60 days left to go in our fiscal year, and we have used 75% of our budget. That could be very exciting. However, I want to caution you that at the end of June, our expenses are at their greatest point, so it's not evenly distributed throughout the 12 months because of the summer payment for teachers, and also some of our special ed tuition bills will come in in May and June. However, in analyzing the numbers and the bills, our best projection is that we are in very good shape to close the end of the year with a zero net balance. And well, I guess I should pause and see if there's any questions or comments on the Business Manager Report. And we'll move on to the Personnel Report, which once, again, very short, self-explanatory, I'm not sure there's, would be any questions there?
Superintendent.
And then the Superintendent Report. So as you know, Sarah Madden will be joining us as the Ryan Road Principal, and I'm very confident that we've made the right match with the principal and the talent and the experience, and such a caring leader. The site visit was fantastic, and we heard all the, all the right things we knew we would hear in confirming her appointment at Ryan Road. The high school search continues. As of this afternoon, they handed three finalists to me, I met with the committee, it was chaired by Lori Farkas, the First Round Selection Committee. We started with 55 applicants, they selected eight for interviews, one backed out, so I believe they interviewed a total of seven. They gave me four, I'm sorry, three finalists, and we will have the second round process next week. Our finalists are Brian Lombardi, is the Associate Principal of the high school right now, he's been there for six years, and prior to that, he had five years as Associate Principal of Minnetog, and before that, he was a School Adjustment Counselor. We have a candidate Greg Brigenti, he is from New Hampshire, he has spent the past 11 years as an administrator in Pembroke Academy, Pembroke, New Hampshire. I believe 11 years, so nine years were as Assistant Principal, in the past two years, he's been the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and prior to that, he spent seven years as a chemistry teacher in Concord, New Hampshire. And our third candidate is Kevin LaLime, and he is currently in Springfield, he's spent the last four years as Assistant Principal at Springfield Central High School, he has also served as the Dean of Students and as Social Studies Teacher. So I'm very excited, there are three high-quality candidates, and the process will continue next week Thursday with site visit the following week and appointment after that. For the second round interviews, we have a series of forums, the candidates will have a tour of the school, will meet with the faculty after school, will meet with a group of students, parents and community members will be invited, and they'll also do a formal interview with me, and I'd like to have a committee of a total of six. So if possible, I'm inviting three school committee members to join me next Thursday, and you would have to be available from 1:00 to 4:00. You have to be available the whole time because it's not fair to come and see one candidate and not see the others, very difficult to vote. I buried that deep, but I believe it is 1:00 to 4:00. And if you're interested, please email me, or you can let me know tonight, and I'll get the times to you. Leeds' first round interviews for their principal will finish on Friday, and then they'll give three finalists, two or three finalists to me, and I'll set up the second round interviews for that candidate next week. Johanna McKenna has been chairing that first round committee, and these chairs put in a lot of time, and a lot of energy, and I really appreciate the structure and the professionalism they're bringing to this hiring process. I do want to take a moment to stop and just acknowledge and acknowledge the loss of our boy swim coach, Steve Constantine, just to honor the work that he's done with our kids. He passed away last week, and though I didn't have a chance to know him, those who knew him have spoken so highly of him and his care for the sport and his care for the kids, and we're sorry to have lost him. Next Wednesday, as Blue Devall mentioned, on Wednesday, May 15th, from 6:00 to 8:00, JFK Middle School Cafeteria is a school connectedness and teen wellness, and I just also want to make sure that I invite all the school committee members, I'd really love to see some of you there for that evening, it's very important for the Prevention Coalition. Last time they had an evening, they had a lot of support, they do provide dinner, last time they completely ran out of food and had to order extra pizzas, so they're ordering double and triple this time, and they've assured us that even if all of you come, we won't run out of food. So if you, if you're available, we'd love to see you there. You do an introductory remarks.
Yeah, you're on the agenda.
Tuesday was Teacher Appreciation Day, and Wednesday was School Nurse Appreciation Day, and I just also want to thank our PTOs who generously supported the faculty throughout the week and made them feel very special and appreciated. Today, as Principal Nancy Hethis mentioned, was the Special Olympics for Western Mass at the high school, and she did point out what I'm sorry I have to repeat, there is a student at Leeds, his name is A.J. Strack, he's a fourth-grade student who has an incredibly special musical talent. He went out there to sing the National Anthem, and so when you see a fourth grader go to sing the National Anthem, you are prepared to be polite and applaud and encourage. He hit the first note, tears in my eyes, he continued on, tears rolled down my face, I'm choked up, I look at Nancy Hethis, she's crying next to me, and I say to her, "I have to talk," after he finishes. His voice is golden, I have never heard anything like that, and it doesn't go unrecognized, his family's very supportive of his musical talent, and he is going to a summer music camp for people with unique musical talents. So if you know him, or if you ever have a chance to hear him, you're going to hear that name again, I promise you. And also, thank you to the students, the parents, and all the volunteers that made the Special Olympics event so special today. For the highlights, you received math assignments, and I'm not going to go through these, except to mention that sometimes when we think about school and the academic challenge in our classrooms, we tend to think about our experiences and remember our experiences, and it's important to note that for some of us, our experience in elementary math is at least 40 or more years ago, all right? And when you look at what the kids are doing now, it's very different from what we did, but it's about mathematical ideas, it's not about solving an equation. And so as you can see from the very first one from Bridge Street, you look at these equations, is it true, and figure out why, what's the relationship between the numbers, and what are other ways to do this to make the equation true? This is coming from second, third, and fourth grade students, and so I hope you were able to do the first couple pages. And you can see the progression and the thinking that these kids go through from elementary school through middle school to the high school, which maybe you weren't able to do those high school problems, but I wanted you to take a look at it, I think it's very special what our kids do in school and what our teachers are able to lead them through. And so I will post these problems on the website, under the highlights on the blog, so that parents can see a sample of the problems too. So I hope you enjoyed your math homework. Finally, I want to just comment on the override draft, I've mentioned that it's in process, I want to give you some general idea without giving you specifics, until final decisions are made, we are going to, currently talking about restoring. We are going to, currently talking about restoring busing. We're talking about restoring positions, and with the amount of money that would be given to us, there's not enough to restore all of the positions. So, I don't want that to be misunderstood, that everything that was cut is coming back. That's not true. We're bringing much of it back and proposing to bring much of it back. We're also adding some new programs and new positions that we feel are essential. One of them in particular is around our students who are English-language learners, and we need to improve and increase that staffing to be in compliance with the regulations for the state. So, you'll see some of that on this priority list. We definitely are planning to restore budgets for classroom supplies at all levels. There's a desperate need for that, and if there's new money available, that's one of our priorities. It's also important, we plan to build in a Personnel Reserve, so that these services can be sustained over two, three, and maybe four years, because we don't want to bring things back in next year, have you sitting here cutting things again. So, we're going to be forward-thinking in our planning, and I want you to be prepared to see that when, when we bring that forward. And finally, the much-talked-about custodial position at the JFK on weekends to support the Park and Rec Program is very important to me. It's very important to our team, and we cannot justify putting it in our budget, but we have met with Ann Marie, I've talked with the Mayor. We want to support that position being there, so these programs can continue to be offered to our families, and so we would like to offer a small portion of our budget, if the override passes, to central services, so they can pay for the custodian and support those programs. I don't think it's appropriate to be in the school budget, but we also don't want to cut it out either. So, you'll have the official plan shortly, and that concludes my report tonight.
Thank you. Are there any new business items that--
Questions?
Sure, sure.
I have a question. Given that we, that if the override money comes through, that there are, I am assuming that there are going to be some of the programming that's currently on the table at the high school would be back on.
Yes.
How is it that, it was mentioned that, you know, kids have already registered for classes for next year. So, right now, they're registering for classes with, with lots of cuts that may be coming back. How did, what will happen over the summer for kids? How is that going to all play out?
It's a good question and an important one, and I'm pleased to say that I was a high school principal and can answer that with some insight. We have to schedule the students before the end of the year, and we have to schedule them with what we know and what we have. It's far easier to do this and then make changes than it is to wait and then try to do the scheduling after the end of June. So, we're putting kids, they're registering for classes, the classes we know we're going to have and we can support. In light of the override, if that passes and we can restore some of these electives, Guidance Counselors and administrators will be working over the summer to put those back in, and that's, that's a rather easy thing to do at that point, because we already know what kids' first choices are, and we're, you know, if their first choice is a class we're not offering, they're going to their second choice. We can simply call them at home, call the parents and say, "Do you want to go back to your first choice?" Usually, they say yes, and we can redo the schedule.
So, does that mean that when they registered, that their list of choices were, included things that are not available? So, that their first choice might have been a class that isn't actually currently offered?
Well, again, the Program of Studies and the Course Selection Guide is created in January and February, when we didn't know which classes were being cut. So, they were able to select those courses, then the courses were cut, so now we have to schedule them without those, and we can put it back in the summer.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I'd be interested and curious to find out sort of what the thinking is on restoring the busing. I, it seems if we, if we, when we voted on this other budget, we were essentially saying that we thought that we would rather eliminate the busing than eliminate an additional, what, one and a half FTEs or something like that. It seems like we're so close, as you say, we aren't going to be able to restore essentially everything back to where it was normally. Are we saying that the, that it was, I mean, which, I guess I'm curious to know, once the decision is made, that busing to the high school isn't worth the one and a half FTEs, which it wasn't then, so a month ago. If the override passes, how is it that busing to the high school becomes worth one and a half FTEs, when we still are, don't have enough teachers in the classroom, even with the, I just don't understand the, how it changes its value so quickly?
Well, I'd like to clarify that. It didn't change its value. Anything we put on the cut list, we didn't want to put on--
I understand that.
Everything was really valuable to us. And I'll tell you how this conversation went. When I went to the ALT meeting and I said, "Let's start our priority list." If it wasn't the first, it was the second thing that the Administrator said, "We have to put that busing back on," because they, our commitment to kids and to the respect for human differences, to the families that depend on busing, is, is something we hold in high, high value, and so our administrators, there's no doubt in their mind that that was one of the first things they wanted back on there, is getting the kids to school.
Why didn't we, in our original budget, just go ahead and cut another one and a half FTEs and leave the busing in then, if it's that high of a value?
I can't answer that, I'm sorry.
Bringing back or putting money towards the, the position of, at the weekend position at the Rec Department, we were just putting out a contract tonight for $8,115 for mechanical repair of the pool. I mean, we are still paying for that program, so, and I do think it's important, and I would like to see it stay open, but we're already paying for it, and I don't know how much more you're talking about--
Well, the school does use the pool. I just, I always like to remind--
Right, but so do they. I, I know they do.
I just like to remind people that there's phys--
They do, and that's why I'm not saying anything about it.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying as far as the extra, that we're actually paying for a custodian that we don't necessarily have to pay for. Yes, we would have to pay for the pool. Whether it would break down as quickly if we didn't have so many people in it, you know, and wasn't so used, I don't know. I'm not suggesting and haven't suggested going after them for the mechanical upkeep and all of those other expenses and the electrical. I'm just concerned about where the priorities are as far as putting in a halftime teacher or ELL, whatever we put in, as opposed to the janitor over there, the custodian over there. And so, that's just my concern, is that, because we already have, I mean, we already pay a lot towards the pool, whether they recognize it or not, just in the maintenance, they don't have to pay the maintenance. So, I don't know, I just urge to reconsider the, putting money in, but I don't know how much you want to do for the custodian.
Well, I don't, I'm sorry, with all due respect, I don't think we should spend time talking about the priority list that doesn't exist yet.
Okay.
So, let us finish it and bring it to you, and then we should have this discussion when it's on the table.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments about the Superintendent's Report? Okay. Any new business? And then the only other item would be to remind folks that we do have a special school committee meeting scheduled for November 14th at 5:00 PM here at JFK. This will be primarily to talk about the Superintendent's Search with a representative from NSDEC, and then, of course, we have our regular school committee meeting on June 13th, and now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The meeting is adjourned.